30 seconds.
Do you have the captions set?
Yeah.
What a breakthrough getting the tripod.
Crazy thought.
It made it so much easier to look at it.
Exactly. It's just...
You know, I was fond of the looks, I think.
Yeah.
The balancing act.
I know, it was a look.
You can ask me.
I know.
Balancing something that doesn't necessarily need to be balanced. Bye for now.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay, motion to open the meeting. Is there a second please?
A second?
That was in stereo.
Flip it to my ear.
Let's see. All right, trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanther?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any board member that has a conflict of interest or any disclosure regarding the agenda items this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, with that being said, will the clerk please read the open meeting compliance certification for just now.
Book notes. Okay, the public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also general matters. And it's in the beginning of the meeting, we've got to change our little opening here. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category protected by New York state law. If you're joining us via Zoom, the same rule applies. Please provide your name and address. If you wish to present a question to the board, please raise your hand. If you have what you need to present it, put it in the Q and A, and I will present to the board for their response. If you put it in chat, I don't check chat, so you'll be talking to each other. Outside of that, I'm going to say, speakers must observe calmly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Have a good meeting.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin our agenda this evening, I would just like to acknowledge the sad and untimely passing of Scott Alberti. He was captain of zone A of the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, and he was our liaison here to the village. And he was just a wonderful guy, a teddy bear. And I got to know him quite well. We met pretty much on a regular basis or spoke on the phone. And he leaves a son, 19, and his wife, so I'd like a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, to begin, any public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Rob McCorvey, president of Friends of the Argarito in the Hamilton State, who just passed out today. Basically, I just wanted to thank the board for the PRISM walk last week. We had a wonderful conversation with representatives of PRISM. I also just wanted to thank the village for agreeing to pick up the latest debris that we collected last August and leveling the pile that's in the middle. And I just request that the statement I just passed out be included as part of the 160. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all your good...
I really appreciate your help.
Well, thanks for all your good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Anything online?
Nope.
Okay, we'll head right into department reports. Building inspector report. We all received a copy. Any questions? I know we have it as an agenda item, the village hall electrical panel upgrade, but this might be an opportunity for it to speak to that because you've been actively involved in that. And you have the...
The quotes again?
The quotes, yeah. There was a quote regarding the upgrade because we're going to be upgrading our meeting room. We're going to retire the hamsters. So we can cast this out.
And I just named them.
I know, you just named the hamsters. But what you're looking at, and I believe the board has received this information before, if you want to speak to that, you had a meeting with the electrical...
Yeah, with that electrical. 200 ampere, we've got a main 200 ampere service panel down there, which is now we go get 1,240 amps worth of breakers. A little beyond what technically should be on. They recommend somewhere around 800 to 1,000. It's got 1,240 amps worth of breakers in it. The 100 ampere sub panel, they only recommend typically 100 ampere sub panel. Feed out of it, there are three out of them. And the 100 ampere sub panel, 100 ampere sub panel has 1,240 amps worth of breakers in it. We have, I mean, every slot is full. At a minimum, somebody should come in here and go through, you know, a company should come here and go through all the electric if they are required.
What goes where?
And clean up. You watch the furnaces come on, these lights flash.
Yeah.
Which means there's an issue somewhere here. There's a little issue. And I talked with Justin before, if I'm not, I don't know, I'm... Could I investigate it and take a lot of time, but it's not my forte. An electrical company is, whether they picked up running some dinosaur furnaces and AC units on those panels could be a major problem or causing a major problem with the electric. So if it's been taken outside source to really look through it and say, yes, you have enough service, but it's not being utilized properly, or it's not enough. Based on upgrades, if we want to upgrade, say you want to put a charging station out here, if you want to upgrade the electronics in this room, you don't have any room down there to do that.
So the next action item that you're recommending would be to have somebody sort through what's there?
Yes.
Make that assessment.
Somebody evaluate what we have, what, you know, define the circuits because it's a mess.
Okay.
What's written down there is not true.
It's not adding up?
I got hammered in here before when I turned a breaker off for a certain outlet was not the outlet at 70. I mean, your outlets in here that are loose, I mean, you know, ancient, I think an evaluation would be a very smart idea.
Okay, so before the upgrade or anything to the panel, let's take a look at what we have.
If this were my house, that's what I would be doing.
Okay, well, it's people's house, so...
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Steve, I would agree that an action like that makes more sense than the proposal in front of us. I'd like to understand what we have before we just, you know, replace the panel. I guess I'd also like to figure out what we're going to have a little bit in terms of the HVAC. And so I'm wondering if it makes sense to get a little bit further in the discussion about how we're going to, if we know the HVAC is the biggest burden on the system, should we decide what direction we might be going in with that first and then have somebody come in and assess what we have and recommend what we need in terms of the overall capacity?
Yeah, part of the thing is, I know you mentioned maybe going to some gas and some gas furnaces, but they're trying, the drive in the state and A and M is to get away from that, to go to heat pump, to electric source, which is the real push in New York, plus the fact that we are a climate smart community. We have not achieved a level to gain the next monetary value, but if we do, you know, there's a lot of big money sitting in the state right now for being, you know, climbing up the ladder in the climate smart world.
Yeah, there's funding and rebates.
Funding, rebates, yes. And to me, going and putting, you know, we need to get rid of the two dinosaur furnaces. And that's no question. You can sit out here and watch or listen to that thing cycle constantly. It goes on for three minutes, shuts off, goes on for three minutes, shuts off. It's horrible for the system and for the building.
There are too many places around here that still have oil to live in for hustles.
Yeah.
Well, so I guess, I think we're on the same page about that, you know, I'm not challenging that the HVAC system needs to be upgraded. We've been hearing about that for years. But we do have the budget cycle coming up, and I'm just wondering if it makes sense to wait a couple of months to figure out where we might, to look at all the different options for HVAC replacement. And then based on that discussion, where it stands, I think that having a reassessment done and any possible upgrades to the electric service would make sense at that point. I just, you know, is there a different proposal for tonight that would move us towards that goal or...
If I may interject, when I first took office, we have the Golosano Institute for Sustainability to do the energy assessment of the building. And we can distribute those recommendations again. I think we wanted to distribute the summary anyway. And they're recommending, they made specific recommendations for switching out the heating system. And I think that's, you know, they're the pros. I think that's something that we should look at. They mentioned geothermal, and they also mentioned, you know, heat pumps.
We just had a larsem there last week, and they were, the technology has changed. When we originally looked at geothermal, we were talking 75,000 hours per hour, which is insane. I mean, it's just insane. He said their new technology is that is so much better. So I think an assessment for the current prices would be is very prudent.
So as far as, so basically, we're saying, we've got a proposal in front of us. It doesn't make sense to follow that proposal right now. Other proposals might make sense, but we don't have those in front of us. So in the interest of brevity, perhaps what we want to do is get some proposals in front of us, put on the agenda again, and then make a decision accordingly.
Yeah, I think that would be the action item, and also the action item would be to actually have that evaluation and assessment of the existing panel, you know, along with what we're going to use to replace it and the requirements.
That would be my recommendation. I've been in this business my whole life, and looking at those panels, they scare me.
Yeah, so we have to do something, yeah. Did you have...
Lily, Lily?
I'm sorry, you're here. The R G and E portion, which is about 5,000, that happens regardless of whatever contract we decide. Is there any, does it make sense to look at that separately and have that, agree to that portion so that price doesn't go up on that? I'm just, it's 4,000 and something. In other words, I think it's their part from the street to the building. Is that what that is for, the $5,000 R G and E?
You can't do one without the other. There's no sense in upgrading the service from the street to the panel without the panel being able to handle the service upgrade.
Okay.
If you're going to do the service upgrade of the panels and go to a 400 ampere panel, you would do the line at the same time as the panel because they both, they're married.
Okay. Yeah, R G and E would work in conjunction with the vendor.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Dave.
So just a couple of things on this subject. First off, does the HVAC system we have now, has anybody come in and said it will make it through the winter?
Yeah, Dorothy?
I did have our heating guy come in, do a full cleaning and review the system. And I said, am I going to make it through the winter because it's been the concern? He said, be on standby, but it looks like we can get through this winter.
One more winter.
Push it any more than that. And I just want to make sure I also understand if we just replace the heaters, we still have to look at the air conditioning because those are also a significant problem. So it's a full system we need.
Yeah, the other issue with that, Dave, would be the fact that they might, but if they don't, you're going to pay an emergency for it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
If you're not coming, you have something that's planned and scheduled, you're going to pay probably 40% more because somebody's going to go, ooh, they have to have a furnace yesterday.
So I believe there are some companies that if they come in and they do an assessment or review, and they do that cleaning work, they'll actually guarantee you through the winter.
He felt we'll get through. He highly recommended updating everything.
And he said that last year, too.
Yeah. So I recognize that risk, but this takes me to the next question. So the electric, will that get us through as it is now? Will we get through the winter on the current electric?
Yeah, I would say yes. I mean, I would say we'll probably get through, but you're, we have a fire because of electric. It was like it or something. That was something due to electric here.
There was also work done on the roof prior to that point in time, so it may not have, it might have been a disturbed wire.
It wasn't done in that area where the fire broke out at all.
Okay.
Right, but nothing been done in regard to that. Nothing been investigated as to that electric and where it is, what it is since that point.
Okay. So here's the reason why I'm asking these questions. The risks and the understanding of those risks aside for a second. So I had a meeting with Siemens who offered the performance-based contracts for energy efficiencies. And so essentially, this was Chris Carter who had come in and...
Chris Cat.
Chris Cat, I'm sorry.
Cat, yeah.
And the nature of these contracts is sort of interesting, just to refresh it briefly. They come in and they say, hey, look, you're going to save X BTUs. And then they take an average of the last 10 years of a cost per BTU and say, this is going to be your anticipated savings with what we're putting in. Now, I think it's some percentage of the money spent on things like HVAC could also be spent on electric as a total project, so long as there's a savings relative to the BTUs and it sponsors the energy efficiency. The other thing that's interesting is these performance-based contracts, essentially, they're creating the entire contract, the entire work from start to finish, it's turnkey, right? So here's the cost, there's no risk of overage. Once they identify that cost, they can't go over it, and they promise you the BTU savings. And if they don't, they're contractually obligated to give you back whatever that difference is, right? Something like the HVAC and the electric could be all wrapped up into one, and I'm thinking, this is to Justin's point a little bit, I wouldn't mind exploring this in the context of the budget because we'll need to finance it and pay for it, right? So my thought is, is get to the point where when we're looking at this year's budget, we're looking at the amount going into reserves and capital work, right? We set aside some amount of capital to do this, and then we have them come in and help us look at all the different iterations of options, whether or not they're heat pumps or geothermal or traditional gas. And they're doing it as all part of, they're basically doing it on spec because we know we need it. They want the job, so they go through all the different permutations of it, and then we simply award it, and they turnkey start to finish with the promise of the BTU savings at the end. To me, that feels like something you do as part of the budgeting process. You embed it in the, you know, next year, and if we can get through the winter, to me, that seems a little bit more efficient than doing it, you know, contractor by contractor with risk of overage, with no promise of BTU savings. I kind of like that idea. I don't know of anybody else. And also, it gives us somebody, Siemens in this case, who's doing all this work for us, looking at all the different options and looking into all the electrical work that needs to be upgraded to support it.
Sort of one-stop shop.
And they can wrap it all up into one.
Yeah, I think that was feeling a year ago almost.
Yeah, more than a year.
More than that.
Yeah, yeah. And they're, they already do work with the Pittsburgh Central School District, and they recognize significant savings. And now I believe they're working with the town, because when I had a meeting with the supervisor, they just put out an RFP, or Siemens did, on behalf of the town. And the savings that they're going to realize, you know, I think it's for lighting maybe throughout the town, they're going to put right back into green infrastructure improvements at town hall. So they're already moving along with that, yeah.
And it is reasonable, I think. Prior to entering into a contract with an RFP like a company for these performance-based contracts with Siemens, we could, if we wanted to, go and get contractors to bid on the different work and compile just what we were talking about prior, right? And then compare, do we want to go down this road, route individually, or do we want to work with somebody else to do it? But to me, I like the idea of wrapping it up into the budget process.
Always have one person be the cook.
Seems like it to me. I mean, there's guarantees on the BTU savings, there's no overage risk. I think, you know, they're making their money on doing the work, right, and the size of the project, but it's relative to the size of the savings. And one of the things they said, which was interesting, is the size of the project is directly related to the savings on the BTU. So you're essentially financing it with your energy savings rather than as a new line item to grow a budget, you're just doing it with the existing savings within the existing budget. So I kind of like the idea. I think it's a way to move this forward and then also have somebody help us identify all the different work that come in as a one-stop, you know, one turnkey type approach.
They would have better kind of exercises than we would going out cold calling.
I would think so, and you don't have to put it out for a bazillion bids either.
And they also know how to, you know, get grant funding. I mean, they're big on that.
Yeah.
I remember that from the presentation you did. That's something they really focus on. And, you know, they're obviously very familiar with the climate smart community programs and how to get, you know, municipality to that next level. Because the funds that we get back, you know, we've already gotten 5,000, which we could put towards an HVAC system for that first step, it was being a climate smart community. They, those funds are not matching. That is a direct funding to a municipality.
And the next step would be 20,000.
Yeah, the next one, yeah, 20, is it?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. And then I think it goes all the way up. It gets pretty, the last one's what, like a, I don't know.
They're over 100, $200.
Hundred and something? Yeah, 100 and change, so, which could be significant for us, you know, depending on. But again, it all goes back to green infrastructure, and that's something that I think Siemens have really focused on with getting the funding.
And I think the question here, too, just coming back to the HVAC and the electric is, you know, at what point do we want to get this done and how quickly? And if we enter into this RFP or this relationship with Siemens, there's no cost out of hand, out of pocket at all until they actually come back with a project with a BTU savings. So it's possible you could, if we were to decide to do so as a board, we don't have to make this decision tonight, but get that work started if this is the route we want to go, right? And we don't have to take on the project until we decide to, and that may be after the budget process, right?
But get, I see what you're saying, kind of get it rolling.
Get the engineering work doing.
Yeah, get the pieces in place.
We're doing all this engineering work. It'd be nice to know, like, hey, as part of this budget, we're going to have X amount of savings on energy, so we can see that cost line go down as part of the budget process. Maybe we offset that with a bond that we float to do these energy efficiency projects that if they can, you know, work into that budget process, maybe we want to move down this road a little sooner. Or, you know, we can delay it, try to get some of the work done on our own first. I guess I'll put that up for discussion.
I mean, I think at the very least, you know, this proposal from Allen Electric, it gives us sort of some kind of a starting point, like this is kind of what it would be. You know, I think your points are well taken with how we could proceed with Siemens, for example, so that at one-stop shopping, they can handle a lot of it. Are there any other thoughts from the board on this? Nope. I mean, you know, I would think then, maybe as an action item, would it make sense to bring it back in December before we go into the budget cycle or, you know, just in terms of timing for us?
Yeah.
To kind of get additional, any additional information that we would need from them or any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, so Steve, as far as what you're talking about, which is kind of out of the scope of the Allen Electric, I guess we could get a quote from somebody else to clean up and consolidate service panels and review the circuits. Is that what you're looking, I mean, that could be another 10 or 15,000, right?
I don't know if you're going with Siemens, but I think Siemens would be able to direct us in that direction.
It could be part of the package.
Everything. I, you know, I wouldn't want to see us throw money on one thing and have somebody else come in and do the same or have the capability of the same thing. I would, I would think you'd want to go with Siemens and say, hey, this is what we are looking at with electric. Is this something you have a source to evaluate to? Like you said, one-stop shopping makes more sense. You always got one fingered point, you know what I mean?
So maybe it's, as the action item, we're thinking, we probably shouldn't even reach out to Chris Cat, you know, to Siemens. Maybe if you could just give them a call and say, is this something that you, you could provide if we were to, you know, be working with you folks before we start spending the money, you know?
Yeah, I think it's good.
If you're going to agree along with it, I would kind of reach out to somebody and also get a quote for an assessment. It doesn't hurt us to get a quote.
Yeah, I guess I just don't want to be locked into a much larger project with Siemens and have that be our only option when it's time to actually pull the trigger and make the decision about how to replace this. So that's the one downside, right? Once you enter into the performance-based contracts, if they come back to you with a project, you're basically doing it with them. That's their, because they're taking on the risk of the engineering work.
Right, but don't we, we identify all the projects directly with them.
We get to identify.
You know, in other words, things that we've already had on deck for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, Sam.
Probably wouldn't hurt to bring another company in just to get a quote, maybe have a charge for us.
Yeah, I think that's what Steve was suggesting as well. Can't hurt, yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to have multiple.
Of course.
And I guess perhaps if we're doing that, you know, Siemens is going to give us the green quote, and that'll include the electric, and maybe we're looking at like, you know, just throw a figure out there, maybe that's 150. I think that just to be responsible, we should also look at a more traditional approach. You know, if we do get a quote for gas plus the electric rearrangement, you know, if that puts us around 50, then I think we've got enough for the board to consider. We can figure out how to move forward. Yeah.
Sure.
What I don't know is whether or not Siemens will give you a quote until they enter into the performance-based contract, right? Because they're specifically financing the bill through the energy savings, whereas something separate, you know, we could put in our own HVAC and new electric and save money and basically be done. The question is, is did that cost? Is there potential for, I think the way Chris had mentioned it, they can do work that isn't green as well, but if even a current modern propane or natural gas furnace is going to save us money.
Yeah, they're more efficient.
They're more efficient.
More efficient than what we have now.
So if we said, this is what we want, or give us the three options, I think they would share with us the difference in cost and the BTU savings and energy savings. So I think they do all of that.
But I think in terms of the action item, just to call Siemens and just say, is this something you do?
Right.
As part and parcel of it.
Is it something you would do also along with the rest of the assessment? And if he says yes, then I'll still get a quote from somebody else, and then you've got to make a decision whether you want to go with Siemens as a board.
Ask, yeah, ask them if they do traditional as well as, you know, green or...
Like you said, they do, and in fact, I think they do anything that will create a savings as long as that savings meets their needs.
Sure.
You know, I mean, they get paid out of what they say.
Yeah, which is a project.
Okay. All right, so we're good with that, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. No, no, good discussion on this. Okay, let's see, where are we? Anything else for Steve?
Update on 75 Monroe? Anything?
I mean, we got the M I R, we discovered two left them at the student's home, or she's the last person to sign the M I Rs. We, I've signed, Zach signed it, Scott signed it.
I've not signed it.
Oh, you didn't sign it? Wait, wait.
I was going to put it in here.
I will have Zach sign it, but they, according to the attorney, they are still having an issue with fees.
Still pending, okay. And at this point, the project itself, aside from monetary issue or considerations, the project's essentially ready to go. Have we, so talking about if this were to move forward, they were to, you know, all the monetary considerations aside, if we were to sign it and they start tomorrow, who is the project engineer, the person who's sitting there saying every pore of concrete is good, every structural element, everything that I don't know anything about is being met at the standard that it needs to and is being built according to the documents?
There are a variety of entities that will be involved. They have to hire a special inspector for concrete, people that are certified to do that. Scott will be the one to look at the engineering aspect of the infrastructure in the ground. If there's any steel involved, that's another entity that is certified for that. And then another party, Scott Smith, will be doing the building inspection.
Scott Smith is the building inspector's...
He's got all the firm, yes.
Okay, and that's somebody that we've hired prior to my participation on the boards.
It's somebody who's recommended through Bergman and Barrow.
Okay, and we've hired Bergman and Barrow?
Yeah, they did the original oversight of the, of the project, of the plans, and did the approvals to sign off.
Including any architectural reviews.
So they're our hire.
Yes, we approve them.
Yeah, and then they've got the capacity within that contract to outsource specifically a building inspector dedicated just to this project.
Yes.
That is embedded in the cost relationship that the builder and developer is, is covering.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yep, Sam? Anything for Zach?
Do you need approval from the board regarding the trees or you were just letting us know?
Uh, it could go either way. So the one quote was for under $5,000, so if you went with that quote, then you would not necessarily need approval. But the other quote was over five, I'm going to bring it to your attention to show the policy was followed. I know the second quote was a little crude and I tried working with the contractor to give me a little more, but it's like.
So Tom Santa's quote is the one that we're working with?
Yes.
Okay, and the, the slight difference was that we, did he give us specifics between the dogwood and the cherry tree?
Yes.
It's, yeah, it's part of the quote.
It was, it was a, one of them did not, and he, but he pulled it out. Was it Tom Santa who pulled it out? He didn't include it?
Tom Santa, everything was detailed.
So you need approval for, to add that in?
Um, yes, it would be the only additional cost to Tom Santa's quote is whether it was going to be a dogwood or a salucher.
So that needs to be a motion.
Yeah, so whatever you choose for that.
Are we choosing the species?
Well, you know, these are all good trees. Yeah, they're all available, they're good trees, yeah.
There's, there's no molar as far as I know for either species of tree.
Okay.
So it's up to discretion. I mean, it's a good planning spot for either one of the trees.
Yeah, did Tom have any recommendation, one over the other? I don't think he did, did he? Okay.
I mean, we know the dogwoods, you know, thrive here, the seller cherries, as you've seen, the other few that are out.
Yeah, yeah.
They're hanging, they're doing all right, they're producing fruit. So that's one of the differences, comparison versus the dogwood or more.
Yeah. I know that there was a preference stated, so I'm, I'm happy to go with the cherry because that, that would make her happy still.
For birds.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Tom Santa with the addition of the cherry. I can't remember the species.
Stella.
Stella, stella cherry.
34, 34, oh.
34 Vought is the address. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall? Trustee Leitker?
Aye.
Trustee Leitke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion yeses.
Okay. Thank you.
Was going to wait for you, but if you could comment just on the road passage? The, the road conditions, you had mentioned that you've gone through that all, we've got a good inventory of where we're at.
So yes, all the data was collected, it's in the town's hands right now, they're processing everything into their program. And once that's completed, that's what we want to us. We have now the ability to manipulate that data as we want to.
Yep.
So on a yearly basis, rather than have to wait for the town, who does not seem to have a set schedule for the assessments, we are going to do that as we see fit.
Okay. Just to, to clarify for the, the public on that, that's extremely important right now because the biggest cost that we have as a village is likely to maintain the roads. And a lot of the roads have quite a bit of maintenance that needs to be done, a lot of them needs to be restructured.
Yeah.
And so the project here is to get an inventory of the condition of all the roads so that we can assess the costs as we approach the budgeting season.
Yep.
To that, from low grade to above grade is what we're going to be looking at because the road is pretty much maxed out, how much higher we can bring. So yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Same question for the sewers, capital projects. Do we have any understanding of the specific big capital projects coming up for the sewer?
I have, how do you mean?
Just generally like any of the.
Sanitary sewer work?
Yeah, the subterranean stuff that we're in charge of, making sure it's all nice and.
Yes, right now we're still being a little more reactive than we are proactive with because of just trying to find time to set someone to people's side for it. I was able to work with the town's sewer department forming to coordinate one of the village's DPW crew to go work with one of the town's sewer department crew to go out as a flushing crew. So it was a 50/50 split between way out and flushing town sewers and coming into the village and flushing ground sewers. So it worked out pretty well. Here's our people and.
Yeah, that's just part of our interdisciplinary.
This is just a chartered arrangement that worked out for the village.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you.
Great.
I do have one thing I do want to talk about, almost nothing to, you know, really start with what Steve just brought up. But in anticipation to a meeting that we're going to be having with a resident who cycles three year often, he has some ideas for figuring of the North Main and Sheen Place intersection. We've tried to keep a parabolic mirror on the means to bridge by the best for cyclists that are going through that shouldn't be, but a means to be able to see what's around the corner because they tend to.
It's a blind turn, it's a blind corner.
So we did a walkthrough with the Canal Corp a couple of weeks ago. And one of the ideas that they had is underneath Clover Street, a lot for me to, I believe it was the New York State DMT setup near there, they're overpass. And so I use that as an example because ours keeps getting smashed or destroyed, it's not bounded, all that world, let's try to make shift. So I did some research and I found a couple of mirrors that would mimic the ones that they have underneath Clover Street. They're about $525 a piece. And then we'd have to buy the hardware, which would probably be about an additional $100 per mirror setup. But that would give us a mirror at each end or each side of the bridge. So the approach from either direction would allow good visibility if there are pedestrians on the bridge to the next. So that's something that we have to decide right now because the mirror has been missing now for a few weeks. But it is something that, you know, if you guys want to consider as an means for improvement.
With the snow coming, yeah, less, less concern at this point, but.
Yeah, cycling will be a minimum.
Yeah. Yeah, Lily. At once upon a time in the past, there were ballards.
Yes.
What happened to the ballards? Because I, I think that was helpful for making people dismount. And I, I thought that maybe we could add a sign to the ballards that said, you must dismount pedestrian only from here on.
Again, the signage, you know.
Yeah, they ignore the signs.
They ignore the signs.
But the ballards really kind of prevent them from driving.
That was sprung, so if you did head on, you know, just, or it would knock back up. We can give it a shot too.
Okay.
Yeah, not that it's going to help the visibility of the bridge, but.
But better than nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, everything is incremental, everything helps, you know, it's incremental.
Similar to the, to the speedhogs on the roads though, that is adhering to season. They know we have, during the winter time, we need an outlook so we can fly.
Yeah, I think the most critical section, of course, as we all know, is between Aladdin's, you know, right before Aladdin's and right after Lock 32. That congested area right there is where we really want to make sure that people are not riding their scooters and bikes through there. And so we need to get a little intense, I think, whether it's signage or ballards or whatever it takes.
Okay.
Spikes, whatever.
I'll do some research, see what kind of signage and ballards that, you know, is available, that might be, you know, helpful.
Okay. We still have them, right? The ballards that went in the holes in the.
Maybe, I'd have to dig around. That was like nine years ago.
Okay, a while ago.
Yeah. So where they, why they were moved at that point, I can't say, where they went to, I haven't seen them in a long time.
Okay, okay, but we'll take a look. Okay, I'll say, and then follow up. Yeah, did you have a thought or a question?
Just to clarify, my understanding was that the bicyclist could go under the bridge. And it's simply that the current path of bicyclists to go across the street is those that are on the road keeping them on the road. And because they can't, to stay on your bike, to your shame place, you have to stay on the road, right? And there's no path, once you get past Aladdin's and Simply Craig's, there's no path for them to get back down underneath the bridge, right? They have to go basically through the parking lot of, via gear stolen. And so they go all the way up to the intersection and then they gotta like cut across to come across.
They can cut through down by the chicken booth or, you know, they cut through the pavilion.
No, I'm not saying they don't do things they shouldn't do.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is for them, for them to stay on their bikes, right? They have to stay on shame place all the way until the stop sign and then getting up to the crosswalk at what is generally not a perfect crosswalk. So, but if they did happen to have their bikes, they're allowed to go underneath it.
So the signage that currently exists that the Canal Corp directs cycle traffic up to North Main Street.
Yes.
And pedestrians underneath it.
And that we have identified as an issue with Canal Corp. Because bicyclists do not want to stop the momentum of being on a bike to press a button. And what we saw, we witnessed it when we were walking with them, that they will slow down and then race across the street. The people who use the buttons are the hikers and the walkers on the path. So they have reversed really what authentically is happening. Because most bicyclists would just rather stay on the path, go right under the bridge and come back up.
Yeah.
And that's what we're seeing, we're witnessing it all the time.
And we are watching them as they are coming underneath, if they're heading eastbound with Canal Path, they are going with the bridge and then they are exiting the Canal Path at.
The aircon.
Yes.
Yes.
So, you know, at that, you keep fighting it, you know, it's, but it's, it's not working. So it may as well have adapted as it's possible.
Right, so this is your comment to the, the mirrors. If they're going to be down there anyway, you try to make it safer.
Yeah, so by doing it this way, it would raise them up to a height that, you know, unless you're standing on a rail, which kids will go, still, you know, and then smash it out with something else or spray paint it, I think it might last a little longer in between periods of.
I, I wouldn't mind at some point trying to get the Canal Corp representative here, some of the biking community members in here.
We're planning on doing that.
And then have a road shop.
That's coming up.
And just sit there and hammer it out.
Figure it out.
What is working now isn't particularly safe coming across that bridge for pedestrians or bikers.
Well, it's definitely safer for, with the flashing beacons, it's now safer for people walking. They use those beacons, I've seen that.
They flash them all.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot back and forth. Yeah, Steve?
Well, I was going to say, we need to have teeth right out for the bikers who just don't care.
They always have.
I've been buzzed, you know, I mean, I've been swearing at it, calling every name in the book by asking people, please walk your own kind of path. But there is no ordinance or anything to like issue them, you know, I mean, do anything. Basically, they can just drive them on again and keep going, so there's that issue there too. It happens a lot. And I'm, and I'm talking professional bikers, you know, guys that are fully uniform, helmets, the whole bit. And they just look at you and give you a salute and you're going to cross the borders, you know, so.
But anyway, you know, I think everybody's raising valid points and we are going to be having the Canal Corp representative, at least on Zoom, you know, in some type of workshop to really take a look at this because it's not going away, you know, yeah, Lily.
Is there any possibility he could be invited to the December 12th meeting to be present for the presentation that Peter Budd is going to give the board?
They would, they're, they're going to zoom in.
Oh, they're going to zoom in?
Yeah, they would zoom in.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're, they're very aware of Peter Budd's hour presentation. Phone calls, letters, emails, carrier pigeons.
Put everybody in the same place at the same time, so maybe something can be resolved.
Yes, that's, that I think would be, is really the approach we want to have for sure.
I think it's going to be a later date than December 12th.
Yeah, just in terms of logistics, I think.
He wasn't able to do his presentation at that meeting.
Yeah, so it may be in January or February, depending on schedules for everybody. But it's, I, I don't think it's worth having a presentation without the entities involved that are part of the decision-making process. Right, otherwise we're just, yeah, what are we doing? Yeah.
And our own conversation.
Well, it's show and tell, I mean, you know, what are we doing?
When the Canal Corp's here, would it be possible, I don't know if we've already received any information, I didn't reach out individually, but on Ford Field and the contract there, might we be able to spend some of that time with the Canal Corp president?
That's a different entity within Canal Corp. This, this person is the director or I guess of the canal system, Canal Path.
Canal Trail Maintenance Engineer.
Engineer, yeah, yeah.
A lot of different divisions.
I know, it's vague, it's vague.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I guess I would just need a decision from you guys, Lily, we want to spend $1,200 bucks on the mirrors and the bridge? Or wait for it and think about it?
I'd like to hold off just because we have additional information.
It might be a bit bigger.
Yeah.
Very good.
I mean, it's not that it's a bad idea, but I just think, yeah, a few more moving parts maybe we want to look at, you know, before we go ahead with that. And also bicycling season's winding down a bit anyway, so it shouldn't be as, as much of a need. Okay? Good, thank you. You know, we have our friends here from Barker Road, do you think we could hold off a little bit?
I am always willing to go last.
I know, I know, no, you've been very patient waiting here for us. Yeah, yeah, come on up here, let's bring chairs up and we.
Okay.
You good? You're all right, okay.
I'm Teresa Rose, I'm an elementary teacher in Pittsburgh Central District.
I'm David Scott, I'm a technology teacher for the elementary in Pittsburgh Central District.
And we're here to talk with you about a project that we've been working with Mayor Plummer on for about a year, I think it goes a little.
So Ms. Cicero, I sent you an attachment for an email, I didn't know if that was something that you could send or share with the village board numbers as a PowerPoint or not?
Not since I'm not aware of it.
Oh, okay.
We have information in the packet, is that what?
Yeah, we have information that.
Okay, terrific.
Okay.
That's been sent out to the board.
Okay.
We didn't know you wanted to do a PowerPoint.
No, 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 we just thought it was like this stuff or.
Okay, so we're all, we're all looking.
Okay. So just to give a little background on the project that we worked with Mayor Plummer on, this was kind of a happenstance, just like a stroke of good luck, I guess you could say. We were kind of joking around one day in one of the offices that we work in and someone had made a comment about, you know, I live in Webster where life is worth living. And I said, well, I live in Canadego, where it's the chosen spot. And somebody had asked, well, what's the slogan for the village of Pittsburgh? And we immediately got on the village website and looked and defined one. We called one of the deputy clerks here at the village office and asked what the slogan was. And they reported back and said that they didn't have one. But would be interested if our students knew of any, or wanted to get any recommendations or any suggestions about what a slogan would be. So we ended up meeting with Mayor Plummer and we talked with Teresa, who's the standards leader for social studies and figuring out where this would fit into the curriculum. And it happened to work with second grade since they're about community and they talk about urban, rural, suburban communities. So working with Mayor Plummer, we came up with some, a lesson plan that we both went into all five of the elementary buildings. So every second grade student in our district had this lesson where we talked to them about what a slogan is. And then we had a video from Mayor Plummer charging up with, coming up with a slogan. So we had, as I said, every second grader in the district. And we had over 150 slogan ideas. And Teresa has a packet that she's handing out.
Yes, we have, I do have.
You do have the color?
I want you to get your paper because I have it ready.
Okay, yeah, we, and you've got one too.
On our screen, but thank you, yes.
So out of that 150, we narrowed it down to about 18 slogans. We had Mr. Piro, we had Mrs. Ward, vote on it, some other teachers. We had some other people within the district that they voted on those 18 slogans, which came down to four slogans. And then we presented that to the second graders, we went back into their classrooms again. We showed them the four slogans, we had, if you can see on the PowerPoint there, the pictures, we had voting booths set up for them. We had them sign or register so that they were part of the whole entire kind of process of what it's really like to, to vote in a real election.
That's great, it's civics, you know.
Correct, right, which is what we talked about when we were discussing the benefit of the project. So they came up with four different slogans that they, they voted on. And there was one slogan that they chose was their top slogan. All five of the buildings, as we said, had an opportunity to vote on that, it was almost 400 students that, that voted on the slogan. We talked to them about the, the opportunity for us to bring this to the village board for consideration. There certainly was no guarantee when, when Mayor Plummer agreed that we would work together in collaboration with this. There was no guarantee that the village board would choose one of these slogans, the second graders were aware of that. I reached out to Mayor Plummer earlier this year because I was going through a building and they're now a third grade student, so I was going through the building, one of the buildings and a third grade student remembered me from last year and they approached me and asked, hey, did Mayor Plummer make a choice on the slogan? I said, well, I go, we have to go through the process of, you know, bringing it to the village board.
Right.
I said, you know, but if we, if we find anything out or if we learn anything, we'll definitely let you guys or let your third grade teachers know. So I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add to that.
No, just, it was a really great experience, the students loved it, they really were so engaged. They were working in small groups and then bigger groups and they kept fine tuning their work. And, and we were really proud of their work. And even the adults who did some of the initial narrowing, whittling down from that 140 were very impressed with what the, the work that the second grade students were involved in.
And if you look through what they have there, the 150 initial, I mean, there's the typical, what you would expect a second grade child to come up with for a slogan. There's really cute ones in there, a lot about what was personal to them. But then as you look at the four that they ended up voting. as you look at the four that they ended up voting on, there were some pretty profound ideas, and you know, the part of the curriculum that they work on in second grade and talking about community, you can see that that kind of comes through in those four slogans that they voted on.
Yeah, no, it was really, it was fun, and you know, the kids really got into it, didn't some, somebody wrote a poem and.
Yes.
They were drawing pictures and, you know, I mean, they really.
Were very excited.
Got into it, I know, I know, I thought it was kind of great.
And it was interesting how, as Dave was saying, some were, for instance, very focused on the dairy.
Yeah, yeah, they wanted the ice cream. I think ice cream's in some of the slogans.
I believe it, I know. And there was a great one from the library, they're looking for a slogan, but as far as the idea of community, they really pulled together on that, and they really started focusing on that as they came to their final submissions, because they went through a revision process, almost two, so.
So, I mean, I don't know that we need to pick a slogan tonight or anything, but I mean, we certainly want to thank everybody for the good work, you know, and we can talk about it here, so, yeah, Lily.
I'm ready to talk.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for not bringing the second graders so that we can just sit and look at their little faces and say.
I know, and then why would you miss that? I know.
Can't do that.
Well, if I can interrupt just for one second, one of the other things that we both thought was fascinating, that when we brought the final four voting, a couple of things, we talked with the students about how, you know, they were getting I voted stickers and how the same as adults with them, and we created these stickers for them, and what we shared with them, that these finalists were sometimes similar, there were maybe groups in different buildings who came up with similar ideas, and so many of the students, when they were lined up to vote, said things like, number three was mine. So I was also saying, number two is all my group. So I think they had this kind of ownership around it, which was really, which is really nice, but.
Yes, yeah. It's in hindsight, but of interest to me is why you wouldn't have approached the town first, because the schools are in the town primarily, and the students are from the town, and that would be branding the town. Here's a thought that I had, trying to pick just one would be so difficult and problematic for me on a personal level.
Yeah.
I am wondering if we couldn't perhaps take some of them, like the top 10 or the top, and incorporate them into our website or our, like on the top of our truth knowledge, all of the hard work that each one of these children have accomplished, and to see it on the website and with a credit to them. In other words, give me a name, let's say Tommy, Tommy said this one, and it could be a quote, and underneath he could be given credit for that quote, and we could have.
But we don't have names of who did them.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think it was done that way.
Or Barker Road, or, you know, in some way to acknowledge that this came from a student, and that is why we have it on our website as part of our header, you know, the people discover on the project.
Right.
Here's where I get a little tripped up, I'm going to be totally honest with you. I love everything about this project. It's, you know, I have brands of my own, and of course, they do things like this, I'm always enthused when they're community-based because of what I do. So, with that being said, the problem where I got a little bit tripped up is where we started talking about now the expense of adding to our sign and the permanence and the stakeholders in the village who didn't really have any input into how their village is being branded. So these are all thoughts that come into play as well, but yet, I feel very strongly that I want to acknowledge the hard work and the wonderful project this is, and to have, find another venue perhaps, to incorporate these on a regular basis to the villagers and anyone who would visit our website, or perhaps we can have something that's changeable on a sign at village hall, or, you know, some other way to use these slogans, rather than permanently, which are quite expensive, I might. Well, a couple of things though, my understanding when, you know, you approached me about the project, we don't even have to vote or decide on any slogan. In other words, this is the genesis of this, was really, you know, a project for the second graders in each school to learn, you know, the process of, you know, voting, formulating ideas, advocating, you know, all of that, and bringing it through and to fruition where it comes back to our board, and we make sure, you know, the kids know that, and we can, you know, I love the idea of put it on the website, and I wanted to do that anyway, but I wanted to close out the loop here with where we would go with this once it came to the board. So now they will see what the board will be taking action on, you know, that's part of this lesson. So we have many avenues or options, you know, for us as a board, and it's just really communicating that back to now the third graders, so this is how it happened, this is where they are, and this is what they've decided, or they're not, they decided maybe not to take action right away, you know, that kind of thing. So it's just about process for the kids and how a municipality works.
I didn't want to question.
I know, I don't want to break the heart, you know.
It would be simple for a teacher to do this type of activity in the classroom, have it end with the activity in the classroom. So part of the thinking around a project-based learning is that it's a real world, that there's self-communication, so they had two videos from Mayor Plummer in it, and they had that interaction with a real person who's in this village. But also to answer your question about why we came here versus the town, I think it's because we were just looking at other villages who had slogans, and so I think that's why we reached out as a first reach out, and I think we talked about the town, and we knew that at this point in time, maybe the town wasn't necessarily interested in looking into a slogan.
Yeah.
So we thought, well, then, let's just, a lot of villages have a slogan, but their town doesn't have a slogan.
And also, I think the kids identify with the village, they come to the village, they see the ducks on the canal, they go to the library, you know, it's a focal point, I think, for a lot of the kids in our school district.
And we discussed also the fact that we have students who don't live in the village or the town, even though they go to school up in South San Francisco, they might live on the outskirts, or actually, I myself, my students went to Pittsburgh schools, but we live in the town of Parenton, so we knew that that would be a different situation, so it was nice to focus on the village, as you said, a central location that's very clearly identifiable as the village, whereas the town, it's less, it's not fenced around it, there's something a little bit less identical or identifiable here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any, did you have your.
No, I just, thank you very much for coming in, and, you know, my kids went through that program a few years ago, and I certainly remember them coming home and talking about the rural and urban and suburban, and so I think it's been a very successful program, and I appreciate having you come in here to address this as well, and it sounds like we've got quite a bit to think about, some great suggestions.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Dave?
For me, one of the great things is looking at how second graders think of the village. And it's really nice to think that over the last, you know, 20, 25 years, to be where we are today, to have second graders think the way they do about the village, it's just a, I appreciate it every day, and it's nice to see even second graders do it too. So, thanks for sharing that.
And to your point, there were some people who said to us, you second grade, how about the high school students, you know, would the quality be different or something? And we thought, no, like out of the miles of days.
I know, that's.
This aligns perfectly with the curriculum.
I love that age group, yeah.
And it's obviously already impacted them, where they want to know what's next and know what's happening, so we were really happy that it was the second graders.
I mean, they clearly, you can look through some of these, they're clearly thoughtful, you know?
Yeah.
They're deliberating about this, you know?
There is.
It's kind of great.
Yeah. To the point of having or not having a slogan, I mean, I'm not against having a slogan, I think slogans are nice if they can brand you in a way that encourages visitors, people coming into your community, and so, you know, how different slogans identify how we feel about ourselves, how we want to portray that, and how we want to be identified. I mean, if we go down that road, you know, I would agree that you want to expand it out to the community and make a decision, do you want a slogan or not, and then if you do, you know, how you decide upon that. But this is, it's a great conversation and really appreciate the work.
And if you notice too, the way they're color-coded, that was a way for us to whittle down the list, and so they're color-coded by, usually we use a keyword, so if it had the word fun in it, all the ones had the word fun there.
The fun category, yeah.
Right, and so then from there, we had some votes in the offices that we work in, some teachers choose one or two from each of the categories, and that's how we whittled it down to the 18 that we then put out for the admin, one of the other teachers to actually vote and choose their top three, so sort of a whittling process.
Well, I think it was great, so, I mean, I guess the action item is, we're going to think about it.
Okay.
And, you know, there's a lot here, and I do like the idea of posting the project on our website and letting people know that this was really a great project, and, you know, I'm sure residents will probably want to weigh in too, you know, that's always a good thing.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
If you have any further questions, and we have pictures of students working too, so.
Oh, yeah, the kids voting, and I, oh my God, it's so cute. We have the little sticker, I know.
That's great.
He didn't want to do flat Stanley, huh? Didn't want to do flat Stanley. You can call Stanley champion of flat.
There are people who do flat Stanley, yes.
Well, thanks so much, and we'll be in touch, okay, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of your good work, really appreciate it. So, okay, so let's.
Thank you.
So let's circle back to.
I was real careful, I said, in Hamlin, they did a contest with kids, and that's how they got where the heart is.
Oh, see, isn't it sweet?
That's a special.
Yeah.
Out of the miles of days, I'll tell you, the kids, you know, they speak truth.
Okay, now we're circling back to the treasurer's report, please.
I'm so excited. You received the bill pay yesterday, I apologize for lateness, but I didn't get back from Ford Church. Okay, get any sooner to you, so you will notice a little change in the report, and we'll see, yeah, a couple of new see a check number and date. When it comes to utility bills, we've always had the capability of paying those ahead, so obviously I started that process, we've been trying to get that implemented, so we did have a few that were pre-pays, so you'll start seeing some of those, and those typically be utility, those type of function. Any questions on the bill pay?
I asked you one and it was already answered, so I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
My only question, Scott's charged his 75 Monroe as part of the consideration.
It's in the thing, I just draw it up, drew it out, so you knew that it was in there, we talked about that at our previous meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as Leonard. A second.
Okay, we have a second, roll call please.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Limpere?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, you would have had the financials, they are complete, but I wanted to, to next up, make sure everything was looking good for you, so you will see them next meeting, probably along with the next month, because by the time we meet again.
Okay.
It will be a month. I really quickly received notification today, it's funny, it's the 11:14, their notice is dated 11:15, so I'm ahead of time. Our sales tax contribution for our second, which is the third quarter, was 186,217.20, which puts us at 53% of our collection with two of the payments, and so we're right on target.
We're tracking.
We are tracking where we want to be. I also will be paying out for some warrants where, and again, this is one of those we can pay ahead, is our New York State retirement. That bill came in, if we pay it before December 15, which we always wanted to take advantage of, a little bit of a discount, it's 74,519, we budgeted around 77,000, so we're right on target again, so that's been great.
That will be in the next bill pay?
It won't be in the bill pay.
No.
I'm going to cut a check and get it out.
Okay.
It's one of those things that qualifies as a prepaid, as well as we're making a bond payment, it's just interest, it's like under a thousand dollars, I've already authorized that wire to go through.
Thanks.
Okay, so those things, we have no choice but to pay. All right. Going to, I reached out to Bernie Donigan, I know we wanted to try to have them come into this meeting, it was not possible. Jason Swartz, who came in the last time, he really continuing to work with us, I forwarded you the email he sent me regarding the multi-year planning and what they have done in the past. He'll be coming in in December regarding the bond, and I asked him also to give us what other things we need to do in preparation for that bond, as well, we'll have to reach out to our bond council and everything else, so before I can even do that, we have to decide the final scope of the project and everything else for that bond.
Okay.
What do you need from us to continue moving this forward?
The final scope of the project, so I know we're doing South and Wood.
Yep.
And if you have additional streets you're looking to do, whatever, I know you wanted to go up to the max we can do without.
Okay, so this is, when do we need to have the bond issued in order to make the payment for the two roads that we're doing now?
Well, we wouldn't need, I'm glad you said that, because we just got yesterday, after I finished the bill pay, the first bill from GPI, we were anticipating that, so that'll be in the next bill pay, we want to tell them, let them know, and we talked about funding that out of fund balance for right now, so we wouldn't have a bill for South and Wood until we put it out to bid, and I'm going to guess construction, spring?
Hopefully.
Okay, so given that.
Spring or early summer, right?
Well, it depends on how effectively keep GPI moving on engineering, if they're caught up by January, then, you know, we could be rolling into hopefully a spring side of the changes.
Which gives us a little time, but talking to Jason, because we're going straight to a bond, it changes things, we need about three months to get the financing.
Okay.
Okay.
So what is our T minus what to have the final scope?
I would like to start the bonding process in January, that would put us receiving the funds in April, which would be in line of construction for whatever we have expenses for that.
So this is for the budget cycle?
Absolutely.
Right? And the next question is, does, for it to be included in the scope of the bond, does it have to have the engineering work done, or can the engineering work be part of that?
The engineer, your engineering work is done.
I'm saying for the next roads.
Oh, the next road, I don't think you need to have that engineering done, you can say it's for engineering work.
You can identify it as part of your.
If we have an idea of what those costs are going to be.
Okay, so then, our next meeting is December, is that correct? That meeting will have an understanding of the road conditions and.
Guaranteed that, because we're dependent on them.
So let's step back from that, do we have enough information right now to know what roads or what other infrastructure projects we need to get done as soon as possible?
Yes. Sutherland and Shane Place.
Yeah, and that's been brought to the board on a number of occasions as well.
Okay, great, yeah.
And I mean, there are still other projects that.
Sure.
Will need to be done as well, but those are two.
Those are the priorities.
Okay, those two need engineering work done, is that correct?
Yes, engineering and planning, there are some things that need to be sorted out with Sutherland, but a lot of things that need to be done, the plan for the Shane Place.
All right, so Shane Place has bigger considerations, right? Obviously, you don't want to go do a brand-new road if something's going to happen to that road a year from now, so.
The initial consideration, I think, was always Sutherland first.
Yes, the order would be Southwood, Sutherland, and Shane Place, so if we can get Shane Place better, then hopefully two years from this summer.
Do we know with regards to Sutherland, if we tag on not just the cost of engineering, but cost of that road, we know we're going to, when added to South and Wood, we're going to be over a million dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as the board understands that we're getting roads done and we have to get Sutherland done, we can fairly easily identify Sutherland, both engineering work and/or the actual work itself, that that's what this bond is gonna pay for. Does anybody on the board disagree with that?
It's geared to your infrastructure.
Right, it's a pretty.
Everything we need.
It's a pretty direct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think those are the two, you know.
Now, my biggest challenge, and you know, we go all the way back to last year's budgeting process, is I, I hate identifying money that we haven't already put in the budget. So we put into reserves, infrastructure money, specifically to pay for a bond of this size. In the understanding that it's gonna be a little bit bigger than what I think was in this year's budget, then as we go into next year, the amount that we're gonna have to be putting into reserves will make up for the difference, plus add some for any future projects, right? So what I'm suggesting is, I think it's safe to assume that we have costs for infrastructure that are at least a million dollars. And I don't know what more than that we need, if we have to make a motion to say we want to issue a bond for a million bucks for infrastructure, and it's gonna be Southwood, engineering for Sutherland and Sutherland, whether or not we do it in one year, we do it in two. The point is, is we get the money, it can only be for that.
Mm-hmm.
We can earn, we can earn some interest on it while we wait. I don't care how, I mean, I care how long it takes to get Sutherland done, but at least we've got some of the money front-ended, sitting in the bank, ready to go. And it reduces the amount of cost by issuing the bond, not the band, and doing it in one big project. We don't have to go through the underwriting. Need as much as we can, knowing that we're gonna need it. And the difference in the borrowing cost for municipality versus the interest that we earn at the bank, it's a wash.
Yes.
My suggestion would speak to the bond attorney and see if we can put Southwood in any road construction project as needed. That way it leaves us, if something happens and one of the roads it erupts, at least then we can take them out.
Yes.
And I think they would recommend that, actually.
That way it's a little more open.
Yeah. Even if it is Sutherland, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Yeah, just in case, you know, something blows up. Yeah.
Anybody else have a thought on that?
I think that's correct. To have it as specific, too specific, then it really ties your hands and you can't use the funds, because they're so strict about how.
That's how we handled it last time. We did a bond, we made it as loose as we could, so we could.
And we already know South and Wood are in the hopper, so.
Right, we know that one's there. We're identifying.
Yeah.
And that'll set the terms.
Yeah.
But I will talk to Jason on that information. I'll talk, reach out to our bond attorney and start that process.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Does everybody feel good about that? Justin, do you have?
Any, any thoughts from any, Jeff, Justin?
No, I, I do think that makes sense at this point, given the infrastructure needs that we're looking at with roads. I guess the, there's still a lot of urgency to look at overall costs and what we plan to do, because I, we need to constrain the total amount of debt service based on the appropriation, or based on the income of the village too. Right. And at a certain point, we're not gonna want to enter into more debt.
Sure.
So I think that, that becomes a big conversation as, as we go to this stage. We could take that off that. If we can write the language loose enough, I think it's realistic to say, we have infrastructure work that we need to be done.
Yeah, that covers it.
That we should cover that difference.
Could be a one-sentence.
Yep.
Bond.
And honestly, just looking at our debt and our debt payments, we're coming to the end of the other bond. I wouldn't want to see any more debt. I really wouldn't, because it just ties the hands as we get the vehicles off, the other things that we have currently going.
Yeah, Sasha's roads will be a fun.
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
That's the challenge, but I wouldn't want to see any more debt in this way. And to me, that's plenty.
You mean, we're not gonna issue a million dollars every year to fix the roads?
We could.
Not unless.
I think we can.
Not under my recommendation, right? You want to do it, great. But my recommendation is no. One is, this is more than enough. I think this is a lot.
Okay, so we, we, you have.
I have my marching orders.
Okay, you have, you have your action items on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want me to go ahead and give the update?
Yeah.
Also, update on the refuse district.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have been continually receiving, I guess, the question to the board is how long you want to run the survey? Right now, I think it's running like eighty percent yes, the rest no, and it's really leaning toward yes. I don't know, do you want to keep the survey open longer or?
If I can make a suggestion, typically you get most of your responses right up front, and then people just forget about it, or it just would. The only way we would be able, I think, to get any more responses in a meaningful way would be to actually reissue the whole thing, you know, resend it saying, this is your last call, if you haven't responded, you know, please respond by X day. And that, that would be the only thing I would, if you, if that's something the board would like to do.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think we kind of have a bit of a gauge anyway of where it's going.
It's up to the board.
Yeah, we certainly could reissue it again, you know, just as a new bulletin, saying if you missed it the last time, you know, please, please respond. I don't know, we'll come up with a date, we'll give a realistic time.
Because if we're looking at this, this is something Jeff needs to dig into, the legal aspect, and then there's, again, it is a budget item.
Yep.
Because it would be part of our.
These administrative elements.
We'd have to put out RFPs again for quotes on the garbage list, so. Just getting a, where do you want to go right now? Because we've gotten.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that? Do you want, do you want one more blast to go out, or do you think?
I would think so, and I, I can't even, I wasn't even clear when it went out the last time. I got some questions from people who were uncertain of how, if certain people in the house, in one household answered differently. Is there a way to differentiate between, is it on hand? So that's, I'm trying to remember some of the other questions.
Or pull out is if we see double email.
Yeah, we do it by email.
Same email vote twice, we can change that. If it's the same household and the wife and husband have two different emails, which I'm, yes, they do, they each get the vote.
Okay. Well, the two residents.
We have no way to tell.
They're two residents, I mean, that's, you're having some two residents, regardless of household.
And we even, there's no way also to tell whether they are residents?
No, there is not. We do not have that capability. I think the best way to look at this survey is just giving you a gauge of what's going, the thought process. Maybe it's completely village, maybe not. It's not, I don't think it's ever meant to be a hundred percent error-proof. There's no way to do that.
I don't, I don't think it would be, but mo, most of the emails are residents, preponderance of them are. You know, so, I mean, I think it's, it's a fairly realistic gauge in terms of what we're getting at.
We sound, what if it?
Well, why don't we do this then? Do you want to just circle, we'll do one more blast, give them like a three-day window? You know, it doesn't have to be a long timeframe, because typically people, when they, when they get the email, if it's something that they have to respond to, there's like a little tiny window where they will or they won't. You're not gonna say, oh, I got that last week, let me go back, and they're not gonna do it. So.
Okay, well, that one more last, and bring it to the board, because obviously if you want to move forward, this is direction that needs to go to your village attorney.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that would be it.
Yeah, let's talk the timeframe here. If we move to a refuse district, does it have to be known and voted on and approved prior to the budget process?
That's gonna be a Jeff question. I think it's gonna be how fast we can get it put in, and then you gotta do your RFPs. We need to determine the cost of running the service, so we can incorporate fees, and we send that information out. If it goes on the tax bill, then it does need to be done, because it has to hit the tax bill. I gotta have that to.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Early May.
That would be.
I have to have it to the printers. So it, it does put a lot of pressure.
Yeah, there's moving parts there.
Yeah, there's a lot of parts.
I, so I like the idea of refuse district. I, I think it makes sense, even in advance of getting additional feedback, to move towards seeing the code, right? I'd like to direct Jeff to write the code, personally.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I, I think we've really had, just even the rough gauging, we've had, I would say, a more positive response.
Yeah.
You know, certainly if you're at, you know, seventy, eighty, I mean, that is, you know, that's a majority, just even with that sampling. And we'll do one more go-around just to make sure. But I'm comfortable directing Jeff to take a look and let's start pulling something together.
I think so, and I'm gonna come back to having the code and starting that process regarding a few other things later. But it comes down to, I'm just thinking about property rights and the rights of citizens and the rights of villagers. And we do things here where we are essentially stepping on what they may consider to be a right, even though it sounds like it's very much wanted. Is that something that we want to go to something like a referendum on? So there's a few other things that are coming up in the budget that I'm looking at, or in the agenda that I'm looking at, and, and wondering if this is something that we want to think about in that grander context. So just pause, we don't have to offer feedback yet, but at a minimum, I like the idea of the refuse district, and I'd like to see what the code looks like.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, part of that also is, I, I've been receiving questions, practical considerations that I wasn't able to answer. For instance, has it been affirmed that if this does take place, that the trucks will only go through once a week?
That's negotiated in the contract, that's how it would be laid out.
Are they able to accomplish that, all the households in the village on one day?
That's up to them in terms of, we set the parameters for what we want.
Okay.
In the bid.
So that was a question, and I could.
Actually, it's like any RFP, we set the parameters, you know. So I can tell you that, let's see, what if the town already has something like twenty-some districts now, and they're doubling, I think next year, they're adding more districts. So I do know in some of those neighborhoods, you know, they're hitting hundreds of houses.
Yeah, I think that would be up to the hauler.
Yeah.
They, it wouldn't necessarily be the hauler would send one truck to the village, they might send three trucks.
And just cover it and then.
That's what I mean, I, I don't know, I don't.
They would send three trucks to hit it all in one day.
Okay. Because we have our requirements that we would set forth to a hauler to respond in a bid.
One of the questions, another one of the questions was, their concern was the wear and tear on our roads, and so, on our fellow streets, and so would this actually minimize that? So we wanted to answer that question. The other question was regarding businesses, commercial.
Doesn't affect them. Doesn't affect them.
So that means that they would, they would still be having their pickups on the day they're, they're having them, that's it. In other words.
Yeah, but it's also set in our code when they can pick up.
The goal, but what I'm saying is, some people's mental, their reasoning is that they would like to see a reduction in the number of trucks that are operating.
This is where we're going with this. That's the whole, that I believe is the point. And actually, if, if, and maybe you could share the information that was the write-up that we put out.
Yeah.
That talks about the benefits, less wear and tear on streets, fewer trucks. So the questions they're asking, I think, could be addressed in the write-up. We can send it back out to you if you want to make sure that they, they get a copy of that.
Okay.
That might be helpful, it's like a Q and A.
Yes.
You know.
I did that, but I, what I'm hearing is, back.
Mm-hmm.
That, did that include, include commercial uses? In other words, would they say, can we say Tuesdays, it's gonna be all, you're gonna do all the businesses on Tuesdays?
Steve, why don't you speak to that, about what's.
You can't do that.
That would be real trouble.
Yeah.
I mean, real trouble on a commercial end. Residential is doable, commercial end is real bad.
Yeah. And also, you know, if there's special events or things that happen, you know, in some of the commercial areas, sometimes they have extra dumpster service. You know, there's just things that happen.
Yeah.
The nature of having a small urban area with businesses located.
So we will have a public hearing, of course, on it, at some point.
And keep on public information meetings.
Yeah, exactly, for sure.
Yeah, I think that would be the time.
Super important.
Yeah.
You bet. Yeah, Justin.
Zach has an answer.
Well, I'm fine with Zach going first.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, sorry, I'm waiting. There are inconsistencies with their pickup schedules. You're not going to avoid that, just because sometimes there are lags in vehicles and personnel being able to come in. We're constantly seeing just between here and on the shop, where they are days behind schedule. So just be prepared that.
Stuff happens, you know.
Yeah, stuff happens. And your garbage can still might be sitting outside for a couple of days waiting for them to come through.
Sometimes it happens. It's like any, anything, any service. Yep, yeah, Justin.
Yeah, just, I, I'd be okay with having Jeff draft up something as well. And I, I think the referendum idea is an interesting one, as, as people consider what the role of a village government is and should be. Might be interesting to get that feedback. Do we want to provide Jeff with any other parameters? I, I assume this is, we're talking about one district for the village, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I would think that would be, I mean, we're not that big.
Yeah, just as Jeff has some direction, so we're, we're assuming one district for the village, and I, I don't know if we want to have something where the, the law would only take effect if we can achieve a contract that meets the goals that we have, right? So maybe it's not all the pickup on one day, but if it's, you know, something that minimizes, that can, that can guarantee to us that it minimizes the traffic on roads and, and meets residents.
You know, that's interesting, because I was thinking, you may actually have a hauler respond with, could we do half the village in one day? You know, just in terms of how they're using their fleet. I hear where you're going with that.
We would just tell voters that, you know, the, the law is contingent upon, and, and actually achieving this district and putting it in place is dependent on having somebody cover the village in two days for the residential districts or something. So it's kind of broad, but it just.
Yeah, but if you're covering, if you divide the village in half, say, you know, okay, we have a single refuse district, but in terms of the fleet, if they just do the half of the village in one day, it's not upset it, you don't care.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's only just that portion that's being tended to, and then the next day they would do the, the rest, you know. So, but I think you raise a good point.
So I guess.
It's the logistics, really.
Maybe, maybe the most broad form of that could be that if, if we decide that, you know, we put this refuse district law in place, it's not something that we absolutely have to commit to, even if we get a really bad deal. Right?
Right.
And that, and Jeff would probably say that, yeah, we can put this in place and.
Hey, we did something like that with the, with the solar energy company they came through, and thus they could show us the numbers. We were not obligated to conduct.
That's right.
That's right, same concept.
I'll run that by Jeff and he'll find the right people.
Yeah, he, he'll know where you're going.
No obligation.
Yeah. Sort of disclaimer.
Thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll know.
Yeah, Dave, did you have any other thoughts?
That's just a thought. I mean, we have a good number of folks in the village. My guess is, who are neither residents nor voters, maybe snowbirds, for example, who don't have service for six months. And clearly, this will be a little bit on their back as part of their village tax. So one would think that the permanent resident might actually get a deal. Hopefully, the fact that there's not trash at certain days, we put it out the bid, it's understood, right? So that's just one aside.
You know, that, that's a good point, because I know when I did speak with Bill Smith and the town, you know, they have some snowbirds too. And because the overall cost for the bidding process drops everything pretty significantly, it's kind of a wash, even if you're gone for like five months.
Which is.
You know, you may end up paying, okay, maybe forty more dollars or sixty, you know, picking up a couple of months, but it, he, I asked if he's, they've received any complaints, he hasn't received one.
Yeah, that's great.
In fact, they're doubling the number of districts.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think, you know, it can be sorted.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I'm gonna keep going, because I think I can.
You're on a roll.
The discussion on the RFP for the long-term planning, I did not get a chance to put that together, because this was away. So I'm just letting you know, we did receive the one thing from Bernie Donigan, so I'm waiting on another contractor to.
There's two others you're talking with as well.
So we're waiting on those quotes to hopefully start to draw up that RFP, so hopefully by our next meeting.
Okay.
All right. So staying on that subject matter for a bit. I'm getting a little concerned about the reserve wording and the reserve titling as we work our way into the budget. And if we don't have this RFP done in time, or the capital plan done by the budget, we're gonna have some challenges. I'd like to, if you could, just resend the one sheet that you had where you broke up your topical line items for the long-term capital plan. And I'd just ask for all of us to revisit those specific reserve titles and think if we need anything more. Because I'd like to start, Jeff, in the process of creating that reserve wording as loose as reasonably possible, but within the subject matters that we've identified as our primary long-term capital issues. And then maybe as we get into the process, there might be some rejiggering of it, but I feel like we're getting close to the point where we gotta have Jeff start doing this work.
Yep, no, and I actually have some suggestions. When I was at NICOM, some language I received from the controller for the different types of reserves we were working at. I think I can put some language quickly together.
Yeah, there's a.
Stealing from the controller.
Okay.
Which would be great.
So if I can steal from the controller, I feel we probably have some solid wording. And then we can finesse it from there, so maybe getting that process started.
Tailor it, so.
Because you can say to the long-term capital plan consultant, these are our reserve titles.
Right.
And this is our language.
We can give them.
Get whatever we need in one of these boxes.
Right, no, I, I will, things hopefully will calm down this week.
Okay.
So by next week, I can get it out to you, before you deal with the reserve language that we, the tech pipes we are looking at, and the language I think can go with it.
That'd be great. I would prioritize getting the RFP worked out for the LT long-term capital consultant first, before you just do. Okay.
Yes, okay, and one last thing, just, no, I can't, I got your attention. Calendars for next year, we have drawn the dates up, I'll be sending those out. We did, again, Tuesdays at five-thirty, we looked back at Thursdays in case anybody really wants to go back to Thursday.
Yeah, I'd like the board to consider the Thursdays, because they were changed to Thursdays for very specific reasons. And I know, Zach, you had a conflict, I mean, you're here tonight and we appreciate that, but you had a conflict, and it's important that we have, are able to have our staff attend meetings, because typically you would not be able to attend on a Tuesday. And we also conflict with the town meetings for people attending one or the other, you know, there's a few other considerations. And also the fact that, you know, the meetings tend to be fairly long, and there's a lot, a lot that we're ground recovering. And I think it's really helpful for staff to have the meeting. And I think it's really helpful for staff to have the meeting later in the week to get that preparation upfront. And then you're wrapping things up on Friday and you have your weekend. I mean, there's other considerations. And that actually was part and parcel of why we had changed to Thursdays. You know, and I know it was changed back, you know, because of Lisa's travel schedule. But, you know, this is, it was a known entity. I just think it's a, it's a more efficient for staff.
So I'll pass that plus a budget meeting date.
Just consider that.
I have some budget meeting dates I want to go to the board. So I'm going to send all that out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And then you can let me know which path, because we do have to accept the board meeting to accept the meeting date. So we get them up on the calendars.
But you sent both sides?
I'll send both sides.
Okay.
We have to pick, we'll send for fourteen, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, for the next calendar day, yeah.
I would just disclose at this time that over the, at least the next three months, I did all my scheduling based on our meetings on Tuesdays. So for me to change that could be, I think, problematic right off the top of my head for at least three meetings I can think of. So I'm just going to be, I'll disclose that at this time.
We could even do more.
Because I made my plans.
Okay, but we could even consider it going forward, that maybe there's the first three and then we switch back over. Because we, you know.
Talking about January, February.
Right, right. And then we, we switch it back over, because people are now sorted through, you know, just to, I really would urge people to consider that going forward.
And then just a quick reminder, we have candlelight night coming, so December 5th. So please, we can stop by the hall, we have entertainment and cookies for all, and it'll be wonderful.
There's some great entertainment lined up, although we're going to miss Steve. He's not going to have a sing-alongs. I know.
And that's all I have.
Yeah. And we're going to have the Morris Snow Belt dancers.
Yep.
I, I'm in South Carolina.
Native country. We'll take that.
Probably.
I love that night.
I will need your approval, yes. Now that you said that, yes, I need your approval. I'm glad you said that.
I just wanted to say, in regard to the Tuesdays, just, I mean, we weren't, we weren't asked at all, but Tuesday was always typically my practice night with the group and it is totally along my schedule part.
Yeah, it's all the considerations.
Plus I have three meetings a month on Mondays and having two nights on a road.
Oh, that's right, because you serve on boards in Hamline, yeah. Just, just as a practical matter, we asked the board to consider that.
Let's go with Wednesday.
Go with what?
Wednesday.
Wednesday's what, school board? Yeah, there was some reason why no one wanted Wednesday, but anyway, okay. We'll sort through it. Okay, are you, what else? You, you are on a roll. I don't know.
I, I think I touched on everything I could possibly touch on.
Okay, let's see where we are here. How about, should we do the public hearings real quick?
Might as well.
I know. Just thinking. Okay, you want to start the first one, because it's after six?
Yep. I don't think Mr. Jewett's here.
No.
Yeah, he came last time.
Yeah.
Do you want me to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the short-term retail business permit for the tree stand at Dairy for Dave Jewett.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir?
Aye.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there anybody wishing to speak? Anybody online?
We have people online, but I don't have any raised hands or.
Well, it's a tradition with Christmas trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing new.
Nothing new.
Same as it ever was.
Yep.
Which is wonderful. Or you're perfect.
Okay, we like it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
So just to be clear, this is the public hearing on both items?
No.
Just one?
Only one at a time.
That's better, that's better, thank you.
So motion to close the public hearing for the short-term retail business permit for the trees at the Dairy. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any further discussion from the board? Or is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the short-term retail permit at 44 North Main Street for the sale of Christmas trees, according to the dates provided by Mr. Jewett at his, at our last meeting. Because I don't have the dates from the, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir?
Aye.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up, the proposed law on an extension of the moratorium on short-term rentals.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing on the proposed local law for an extension of the moratorium on short-term rentals.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir?
Aye.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is there anybody wishing to speak on this matter? Either here or online. Nope?
Yes.
Crickets. Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the extension of the moratorium on short-term rentals for non-occupied residential properties. I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir?
Aye.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment that I, I believe that the proposed local law makes sense, given that we have had a committee working on studying the issue of short-term rentals and the legislation is still being researched. And I believe that the prolonged moratorium is justified based on the work that was ongoing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any, any other comments or thoughts?
Just one question for Steve. Have we had any complaints or inquiries with regards to the moratorium since it's been in place?
Well, I've had, I have had inquiries on the moratorium, because I have had, I think, three.
Three people asking how long or?
Yeah, if it's still going on, if they can, you know, get in between, you know? Is there a way around it?
Are these properties already owned or that they were looking at purchasing?
Two are existing, one was potential.
And are they residents?
Yes.
So as in, as a, they're residents in that property, so the moratorium didn't apply to them?
I thought it was pure, the moratorium was for any short-term rental.
Non-owner occupied.
So owner occupied was.
They're exempted.
Yeah.
So we can get back to them.
Yep.
That's why, that's why I was asking if they were residents, because we've made that distinction.
Yeah, I was, I guess I wasn't unaware of that. There were wanted to owner occupied.
Okay, I'll follow up with you tomorrow and we'll sort through that.
There's a copy of the extension of the moratorium embedded in tonight as well.
Okay.
But basically, if somebody votes here, they're exempt.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
My only question, does, have we heard anything yet? Really? We haven't seen anything yet, right?
No, I haven't seen anything yet. My understanding, they were going to try to be present in December.
Mm-hmm, that, that was my understanding per Alexandria. They've been communicating with her and she's been, you know, the administrator for the, for the committee. That was my understanding. But why don't we follow, that'll be an action, I must follow Alexandria. Let's confirm that and then let's, we'll let the board know. Alexandria can send out that information. Okay?
Yeah, we're just going to have to start December's meeting at 1:00 P.M.
I know, we've got a lot, I know. It's always the last meeting of the year, you know, just everything. Yeah. Okay.
So this is one, this goes back to the referendum conversation. If we have a owner occupied Airbnb law that restricts their ability to, or even for somebody who owns the property, what will take away what is currently perceived to be a right? Is this the sort of thing that we want to bring to a referendum? Or do we just simply make a decision on it, right? So again, these are property orders, some residents, some non-residents. Do we want to make a decision to potentially take what is perceived to be a current right up until this moratorium? And I'm not saying it should be or should not be. It's just one of these, one more item that we have to ask that question, right? And the tree's coming up next, I'll talk about that too. So anyway, just keep that in mind.
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, I got a question regarding, you're talking about owner occupied. So you, just to be clear, does it mean the owner gets to be present during the rental? Or just that they own the property currently?
Just that they live there?
It's your primary residence.
Primary dwelling, that's right, for six months and a day. So they, they're a voter at that residential location as defined by New York State's Voting Rights, right?
Right. The queries that I have are people that own properties but don't live at those properties.
That is non-owner occupied.
It's not owner occupied.
That's, that's what I wanted to be clear about.
And they are part of this moratorium.
Yes, so I was correct in telling them that they weren't allowed. They are not living at the residence, they're holding the rental.
Okay, great.
Okay. Great.
So then, have we voted to move this?
No, we haven't.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve or to extend the moratorium on short-term rentals for non-occupied residential properties in the village.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir? All right, Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Do you want to just get through the tax surrender thing?
Yes.
That's administrative.
There's something else I could have done.
Yeah, that could have been in your report, actually.
Yeah. This is our yearly tax surrender over to Monroe County. What happens when residents don't pay their tax bills? We turn it over to the county, the county does the collection on the county bill. The county makes us whole. That's important for the board to understand. We always are made whole on our tax collection. So it's a guaranteed revenue.
Yeah, it supports villages.
So the county assumes the collection?
Yes.
Nice.
Yes, the county does assume the collection. And I will need the board to actually sign for the county. It's already been sent to them, because we have to have it assumed on.
Yeah, we have to, but we have to sign it as a matter of record.
Right, under that pass-through and sheet and as soon as Lisa gets that, we're seeing the term. But here you go. So just really, I need your motion to accept this.
Yeah, that's great. Consolidated legal.
I know, I know, exactly.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the certificate of which surrender is presented.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, I didn't sign. But this is just a simple matter of time. Once you hit a certain point, you're like.
They have till October 31st to pay it. They receive a notice telling them that if they don't pay by this date, it's being surrendered, so.
And that happens to everybody, no matter what, just that's the date.
It's a process. Because the thing is, we go into tax bills. I have to notify them if they don't pay their sewer bill by a certain date, then it goes on to their taxes as well. So it's just a process.
Yep. Okay, so, okay, everybody's signing as we get through that.
Yeah.
Next up, the DPW bathroom update and discussion of facility options. Scott Harder was on the line, he had to drop off and go to another meeting? I believe, I think, I think so, I think he had.
Yeah, he is gone.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you need larger drawings of the suggestions, they're here.
Okay. I'm all right, I've got a big PDF here. Anybody else want to see these?
I have, I have.
Do you want them?
I don't want them, because, yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Thanks.
Yep.
I think actually we printed that from the.
I know, I think so too. Can we pass that back to the board, please?
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have the two different options for the bathrooms. One, the one option that we really were looking at is contained within the parameters of our boundaries and our property. And the other one, I think, went over by, what was it, two feet?
Just about.
What was it?
Just about.
Two feet, yeah. Which would require us to go back, you know, I think, to the canal corp. But that's the one I actually prefer. I think we all agreed to that.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to bring this back to the board in terms of, should we go back to the canal corp and say, can we have two feet? You know, I mean, that's really, you know, the concern, and our attorney isn't here tonight, he's, he has a family matter. But the concern is that it's a, we're permitted for the use of the property, but we're putting something that is structural on a little bit of it. And technically, the canal corp could ask for their two feet of the building back at some point, which statistically speaking, highly doubtful. Nonetheless, it would probably mean a little bit of a different negotiation with them to get, you know, just to make sure.
It's not unprecedented, it's happened several times, with different property owners.
Sure, so I don't think it's unusual.
So I don't think it's unusual.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't think the Canal Corp does either. You know, it's just more, you know, essentially giving Scott Harder probably, who has great connections with the Canal Corporation, would probably circle back and talk with him about that, as well as Jeff, if there was any additional specifics. So it would really be a direction from the board, just to make sure that we're covering our bases. We go back and talk to the Canal Corp, who would be involved. Yeah, okay, good enough. Before, before I would feel comfortable discussing that part of it. I, I think that a better starting point would be to establish that the DPW facility will remain on the property. I don't, speaking from a personal perspective, want to invest money into these much-needed facilities for the DPW, only to have the building moved to a different location. So I'd like the board at some point to acknowledge or make official their position that the DPW facility will remain in where it is. And then we will talk about investing the money into the improvement of the existing building.
I'd like to speak to that because, Dave, you were there, I know, for the state of the village speech that I gave to the chamber. So, and you all have the opportunity to certainly see the video online. It was visioning on my part about the possibilities for that facility because it's a beautiful, it's in a beautiful location. It's adjacent to the Arboretum, it's adjacent to, you know, the town preserve as well. Would it be optimal to get a good facility in a different location? Of course it would. Does that mean it's going to happen tomorrow? Does it mean it's going to happen in two years, three years, four, you know, what does that look like? And again, it goes back to planning and what, where do we want to put our reserves and how does that look? The other piece that I spoke about, and maybe this is something that you weren't aware of, and I think when you look at the investment, I don't know that we're investing as much in the building, okay? You just want to look regardless of the needs of the DPW, because this is needed. This has been needed for us.
There's no question.
We agree to that. But if we were, say, say the DPW building moves and the bathroom stays there. And now that building is adaptively reused for a public pavilion with bathroom facilities. And now boats can dock, we can charge for them to have showers, laundry facilities, just the way Fairport does, Brockport does, other communities. In other words, we are adaptively reusing and we're leveraging an investment that's already been made. We're not discounting the investment. That's something I'd like to, I'm just throwing this out, this is conceptual, you know, because we, we have limited revenue streams, as we all know, in our community. And so, you know, even if we were to say, right now, we have a spot, we're going to relocate the building. How long do you think that would take?
Years, it would take years.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not going to have this conversation with you guys for, you guys have been to board for seven years now.
Yeah, this is seven years now.
So it would be like decades before we'd actually be able to move into something.
So, you know, I get where you're coming from and I agree. Why would we want to invest in something that just, you know, oh, well, that's done? I don't think it would be done. I think we, we have to look fully at a vision for, it's not just the bathroom for DPW. This could become a facility for the public, for boaters. It could, it could be adaptively reused. So I see this as a much-needed investment right now, no matter what, whatever the timeframe is for us to potentially, even if we could relocate the building, to, for us to sort through that. And then we have the, I think, a wonderful possibility in the future to bring in additional revenue, activate that area in a way that's meaningful as a recreation area. That's where I'm going. That's, that's, those are my thoughts. And I'm just throwing it out. I mean, that's why I, and I, just to be really clear, when I gave my speech, it was couched in the form of a vision that I have as a possibility.
Okay.
Okay. That's as far as this is on. And so that's why we're talking about it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I appreciate. I appreciate being able to talk about this.
Sure.
So, given that vision, I, I would have thoughts about that as well. But it's so far down in the future, as far as having a facility there. I don't know that we would have built it in the same way to function, the way we needed to function for the DPW for public uses. I understand what you're saying for boaters and, you know, it would involve docks. I mean, it's a huge, huge project and I understand that.
Sure.
I guess, from my perspective, I was hoping that the board could make a commitment to leaving the DPW building in place for a certain period of time that would make it feasible or worth the expense to make these, this addition work for the DPW, to be designed specifically for their use and in a way that suits them and not for maybe a future.
Okay, so.
Because I'm seeing it as a place where kids are going to be hanging out at night, who's going to monitor it? Who's, you know, I mean, I just see abuses as well.
Sure.
That will have to address.
And the town, you know, the town manages their parks and their facilities too.
Yeah, so I'm seeing it as a lot.
No, I'm saying that, you know, none of this has been, there's no decisions here.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think we're kind of going down a little bit of a path that maybe isn't there. We know right now, we need a bathroom and a shower and a laundry facility and proper, you know, proper facilities, separate bathrooms for our DPW. What I think the question is, that I'm hearing from you, is there has to be a specific timeframe for that building to be there, only for the DPW to even make that facility worthwhile. Is that what I'm hearing? I'm trying to really understand.
Yes, I would say that's true.
Okay, so now we have to come up with X number of years, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we have to come up with a certain number of years to somehow make this worthwhile, to even make this investment in our DPW. Is that what I'm hearing? I'm trying to really sort.
Yeah, I understand, but it's, it sounds a little bit different than what I intend. I feel they deserve to have this facility, let's start there. I'm not questioning that. And I would really like to see this happen and I think it should happen. At the same time, I think if I was looking at it, if I'm spending the money and it's my property, I would want to make certain that before I invested this amount of money, that I was going to see.
A return.
A return or as time goes on, that it was worth the expense. So I think that's what I'm just looking at.
Okay, so you're looking at the ROI. And what was, what was the month, the funds that were approved by the board that were set aside? Because it was ARPA and it was sewer.
Thousand.
Right.
Hundred and.
No. Well, we had the overall, the ARPA, I believe it was 50,000 or 60,000.
And then from sewer.
The rest coming from sewer.
Whatever that was.
A lot of the usage is sewer.
So what about 100,000?
Easy, yes.
Yeah, so we're saying about 100K. So what we would have to do then is create the financial model to, what kind of return are we looking then for this investment? How many years would we have to keep that building? Would it be a 10-year? You know, the building must stay there 10 years. 10 years so they get their bathroom. And, and we can't move it, we can't do anything. That's what, is that what I'm, I really want to understand.
Basically on their use.
I'm trying to track the logic all the way down to the conclusion of what a return on this investment means to provide this to our crew.
Okay.
Yeah, Justin.
I'm not sure that, to, to me, when I envision a public bathroom for boating facilities, I see something quite different than a bathroom for employees of the Department of Public Works. And I guess, you know, not having any architectural background myself, I don't pretend to have any expertise in the area. I, I just think that you'd have a very different kind of a thing for like, you know, a facility for people in, maybe in relatively unobserved, you know, kind of off of the, off of the path area. I just see a different kind of a structure there. And I guess, without knowing what it would cost to turn this kind of a plan into something that could be part of that future vision, and having not really discussed that future vision.
I don't know.
I don't really see us being able to do an ROI calculation like that. But this makes it more, it's complicated, given these discussions.
Sure, sure, but we still start with what's needed right now, yeah.
I, I was just going to point out, I think the mayor's vision is a separate thing. What you're building is for the DPW.
What we need.
So it will be adapted for the DPW. If anything happened, and let's be fairly honest, because I see the books, you're going down for a million dollar bond. Building a new DPW, I'm just going to throw a wild number out there, it's probably three and a half mil. We don't have it and we're not going to have it. And I have first seen us building a building, at least, and that's really planning hard, is 10, 15 years. So I'm going to say the use of this bathroom, we're going to get it in spades because, let's just face it, it's a building around and you're losing it if you don't build it.
Well, and it's sanitary and it meets certain codes.
And if they decide to adaptively reuse it, I'm going to guess after 10 or 15 years, they're going to have to do some major remodeling. So I think just having the plumbing there is the bonus.
Pretty much, that's where I'm going. And I would like to speak to like, you know, where it's sort of located relative to like privacy. I don't know if you've gone to any of the other, like, go to Fairport, see where all the facilities are. I mean, they're all, boaters just want, you know, they're docking their boats, they're getting, you know, they want all the convenience, they're running back and forth, you know. I, I'm not seeing that as somehow an obstacle perhaps to where it would be located. And you're right, even if it was 10 years down the road, you know, you remodel, you can expand on it. We wanted to reach out to the architect, Fran Obermeyer, who did these initial plans for the bathrooms. He couldn't be with us tonight. But he certainly could speak to that and how we would potentially adaptively reuse for a boating community, for more of a tourist kind of trade, relative to what the DPW needs down the road. How, what would that even look like if that's possible?
But I think at this point, you're looking at solely your DPW.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I see.
Yep, I'm right there. We need it.
No, go ahead, Zach.
No, I'll have to just ask you.
No, I, I appreciate that we're having this discussion. I guess, I wish that we had been brought in to talk about what the specific concept was, what was going to be included before the architectural, you know, before we've got like Plan A and Plan B.
That was brought, that was brought before the board, what, last year? It was approved by the board to have these plans put together.
Yeah.
For the previous board. That was already approved.
So I guess, at this point, I've raised some concerns about a bunch of parts of this. The ARPA funds, we didn't hear it back yet, if we're actually committed to expanding those funds on this project. The, I, I don't know if I would do it this way. If we're looking at doing the most minimal expense for the DPW, a lot of this is related to the necessity of the sewer functions, the DPW, the showers specifically. I understand the town has that. If part of our plans for the future are up in the air here regarding the DPW facility, I think that it would be responsible to consider whether we want this $100,000 remodel, given the flexibility that we're looking for in the future. Or if perhaps we consider doing something with having somebody else take on the sewer responsibilities, like contracting this out with the town for a certain amount of time.
Do you want to speak to it?
So it's not just sewer-related activities of this, the locker rooms, the bathrooms would serve as. Right now, it's one bathroom for eight people during the day. Everybody's consolidated to that break room, to the shop at certain points of the day, which is when everybody's trying to use the bathroom once, to gesture with it. Everybody knows how, you know, why we use that bathroom.
Yeah.
So now you have a bath, a line of people waiting for that in anticipation. They, they have the option of getting in a vehicle and driving to another location using the bathroom or going outside, which literally even not for.
Just to be really clear, I'm not saying don't improve the bathrooms. I'm just saying, if, if part of the function for which this design is intended is not necessary for some period of time, then maybe we would have a different concept for a bathroom that would be better.
And what would that look like?
Wouldn't have showers.
So, so when you work in a sewer then, or, oh, I seem to want to contract out with the town.
So rather than not getting sewer.
So we get no.
We still have a locker room because people still change out in the parking lot or in the dirty part of the shop. It's, you know, not only, we still have people in the shop, they have second jobs that leave this job to go work another job and they have to change or for whatever reason, they have to get changed leaving the shop to do so. There's no place for them to do this in private. They're doing it in the car, they're opening doors to cars out in the parking lot and doing it quickly before someone has a driver sees them. They're going out into a dirty part of the shop to change. Is this necessarily, what, possibly a functional?
Just real quick, one question. In the job of doing DPW, has an employee gotten dirty not doing sewer? We've had employees end up doused with oil, with whatever.
It's also just.
The job is dirty. I mean, giving them a place to clean up before they track it home is just common and.
Joan Rule was changing oil underneath one of the trucks one day and the filter that blew down her, she was covered from her head down to her feet in oil. I had to cut her clothes off so she could go home in her car to go clean it.
This is, I'm going to say, most DPWs have shower facilities for their employees. I mean, the sewer is, yes, it is a substantial part of it because, let's just face it, that's gross work. They really do need to shower. I, I think this.
My, my point is that it's not just based solely on the activities, but sewer work.
Yeah, there's more than that, yes, Dave.
So just a few things. This goes back to the budget conversation that we had in our last meeting, right? The idea that there is a portion of cost, right? Both at the DPW that goes to sewer and there is discussion of what portion of office goes to sewer. And just for the public to understand, if, to Justin's comment, if we were to look at somebody else to do the sewer work, right? We would basically put it out in the bin, right? And we could look at multiple towns.
We've already got a contract that includes the maintenance cleaning, lining of.
So essentially you outsource it.
Some of it.
But, but we would still be responsible for the capital work, right? So the, the maintenance of the actual infrastructure itself. But we would no longer do the collections, we wouldn't have any costs here that would be related to the sewer because it'd all be subcontracted out, right? So.
You're going to subcontract out issuing bills and collecting bills? You wouldn't do that.
So that doesn't, that isn't part, so if you were to contract it out, the billing wouldn't be done by them.
No, you wouldn't want to do that. That's your revenue coming in for your sewer.
That's a revenue stream.
So I guess what I'm asking is, so when you, can't you push all but the maintenance of the main lines out to somebody else, including collections, including office administration, right?
Then why are you running a sewer department? I guess that's my question to you because you're not going to gain the revenue.
You still have to funnel it through, right? So they build the sewer department for all the work that they do and then we basically collect the tax to put into the sewer department to pay the entirety of that subcontracted out work.
I don't think, I, I've never seen that done.
Think, for example, water authorities, right?
That's the water authority, that's their total business, it doesn't go through any municipality at all.
Yeah, it's a separate entity.
And I'm not using this as a reason to say why you may not need to shower, need to shower. Look, what I'm suggesting is, is let's say, we can subcontract out, we have a flush truck for regular day-to-day maintenance. What if we don't? Right, what if we have that contracted out? Not only do we have some amount of your staff that we don't have to employ, we don't have a flush truck, we can sell it and we may have space within the existing building to put showers and to put toilets, right? Without needing to build it out, without needing to design it with a whole new building and new roof or anything else. And again, what I'm saying is, and you mentioned this three meetings ago, the DPW has grown, our expenses have grown, our responsibilities have grown. And maybe there's something to be said for a larger, for example, the town, and you just said we had a shared relationship with the town and doing the flush truck back and forth. Again, what if we just have a slightly smaller DPW that doesn't do the, the day-to-day, month-to-month maintenance of the sewer? Right? I think it's worth exploring.
So then we need to construct a cost-benefit analysis of what it would take to do that.
Yeah.
On top of that, you're also going to rely on someone else to respond at Christmas at 2:00 in the morning to come in and flush one sewage.
Why we don't contract out with somebody, you know, Spencerport, you contract out with the town of Pittsburgh, for example. Or somebody that's remarkably close, that is part of the community, as the mayor's aptly said many times.
I, I think that's a shared service that you might overextend yourself by, unless the town's willing to.
Okay.
Dot the responsibilities of those. I don't know, I can't.
Why don't we do this? It sounds like this isn't going to move forward, other than I think we should take a look at, with Canal Corporation, what about two feet? Just, you know, to see what's there. That's something separate. But clearly, why don't we look at what it would be to absolutely bid out sewer? Let's take a look at that. What would that be? Let's just take a look and bring it back to the board. They have it all taken care of. Because this is, this is what I'm hearing. Bid it all out.
If I just.
That way they don't need showers, you know, they don't need anything.
I think they still need.
Oh, well, I do too, but I mean, I just feel like we're going down a rabbit hole here.
May I?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So I, I think that what we're talking about here is not just, you know, getting rid of all of it. We're talking about a big capital improvement in a building that needs other capital improvements. So before we go down that, and which might be revised in the future based on plans. So what we're talking about is taking a look at the overall village services related to an area where we might be able to trim down and make operations a bit more efficient. If I, might just continue. It won't be long. So what we're talking about here is not just getting rid of everything in the billing. What I would say is, you know, we're still, the, the financial stewards for that area of village services, we still maintain the sewer district and, and the budgets. And we would look at establishing something like a five or a 10-year contract with the town so that they do the actual work. And I think this leaves us room to look at the bathroom plans and figure out what it is that meets the needs, given possibly new space if we don't have that machinery and streamlined needs of the staff and the other work that we're doing.
Okay, so, okay, no, just, just, so I think the action items are going to come from both of you because this is where you guys are going. What is it that you want to have research to be farmed out from sewer? And what do we, you want the village to retain? And I think you're well close to be charged for that because it seems that that's, you know, that's something, a model you'd like to look at. And, and maybe bring that back to the board.
I didn't know Jeff wasn't going to be here tonight, so I don't know that structure.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we're going down a very different path. Yeah, you were going to say something?
No, my only concern is, A, we're sending a message to this DPW. B, what kind of timeframe are we talking? Because if we could get this finalized, we could be building in the spring and they could be seeing an end to it. A bad situation. That's my only one thing to put out there and then I'm going to stay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious if all the rents that would come in for sewer would be a wash or just a transfer to someone else. But you're also, you're cutting your legs off at the same time because that money could be used to fund this bathroom. It's sewer-related. The work, the work, the, the use of it is sewer-related. So using funds from a sewer fund to cover the costs of building this.
We don't know the financial model yet because both these trustees are going to come up with those parameters of what they would like to see sourced out. We don't know what that financial model looks like. You know, I mean, you're raising good points, but we simply don't have, is it going to be a wash? Is it not? What does that look like? How does that affect our revenue stream? You know, all of these things, so.
And the problems that exist.
Yes, and the morale crew and retention and what does that look like and all of that, yeah. Bob?
Yeah, I'm Corby Center Washington. I'm having a, you know, I actually support the idea of a bathroom. I think it is a facility that's well overdue. If you have a DPW or a sewer department, the facilities that you're building are meeting their needs. I think it's a good investment. I also understanding the fiscal situation of the village, saying that maybe if you're going to. going to make this investment, you commit to the site. Where, you know, nobody is more interested in having the best and most usable public signage along the canal of anybody in this community. I think there's plenty of real estate to keep the DPW at that site and continue to develop a promenade along the canal with more park space and landscaping. So if at some point, and I'm speaking as an architect, if you build this as a nucleus, and I know a friend over there, I used to work with him, he's a great architect, by the way. You could use that as a nucleus. The frame of the garage could be retrofitted. The, you know, I've talked with, when I was mayor with Zach, it's the bay where the lift is that is really obsolete and maybe want to be reconstructed in the future. But you could strip the frame down and build a new garage around it and reconfigure the site, which would make much more efficient use of the yard. The space is not well utilized today. But I think if, you know, given the size of the budget of the village, if you're going to invest a hundred thousand dollars in bathrooms, and for God's sakes, given the other expenses with roadwork that you just talked previously, keep the DPW there and then think long-term. You know, I think that makes much more sense because no matter where you move the DPW, it's going to be much more expensive than keeping it on the site where it is.
Oh, I think, thank you. No, I think, I appreciate your comments and I think we've all discussed looking at it in a million different ways that way, you know? And again, I.
That was an answer to a question I had asked earlier.
Right, right.
There was the answer.
Well, that's, that's an opinion for sure. Yeah, that's an opinion. And I do think that nothing's going to happen overnight. We need the bathroom, let's build a Korean bathroom.
Yeah, it's back.
And the money's coming out of sewer. The money's coming, a lot of it's coming out of the sewer fund already. This money has already been budgeted.
We haven't put.
Well, not budgeted, but you know what I mean, approved.
You, we talked about.
We earmarked it, yes.
We agreed that this was the appropriate way to do the bathroom, take advantage of the ARPA funds, which the clock is ticking on and on the reminder board, we have to finalize these projects and get them moving. So you're either going to, if you don't finalize these projects, you're going to lose the money.
Yeah.
So we need to do.
Yeah, we have compliance with ARPA.
So anyway.
I, I'm also here representing the DPW crew. They asked me to read this to you guys and I feel like we do need to sort this out a little bit, so please hear it. Statement by the DPW. The staff at the DPW unanimously agree that our current bathroom, locker room, shower room options are extremely inconvenient, nonexistent and outdated. Often our staff will be using the bathroom facility during a break and lunch. The bathroom door is two feet away from the nearest seat, kitchen table. It is quite unpleasant and very embarrassing that you will be sitting at the table or occupying the toilet. To sit at a table and hear the noises of the bathroom to be, to be, or to be the person in the bathroom knowing everyone can hear and smell what is happening is quite concerning. As we are also sewer workers, we have no shower within the facility should we encounter sewer bacteria. Often we are forced to shower and wash up in the shop sink. Lastly, instances occur that require change of clothes but have no private space to change. Often individuals are forced to change on a dirty shop floor or outside in the parking lot. For these reasons listed above, we ask that the board reconsider the options for the proposed bathroom additions to the facility. We are very happy to hear that the finding was made available and a design plan was in place. However, after learning, the board suggested not to proceed with the much-needed addition as left employees with a feeling of great disappointment. Again, we please ask that the board reconsider the options and continue to move forward with the proposed bathroom facility as it is of the opposed importance and value to the DPW staff.
Thank you. So you just heard from people who take care of our village. This is where we are.
If I might just respond to that briefly, I think that, at least from my perspective, I'm very much in favor of new bathroom facilities. And what this is about is ensuring that we're efficient and coming up with the best plan that meets all of our needs in the shortest timeline possible.
I would agree with that. I mean, I was hoping to make that clear, that I agree that we want to have this built, this facility built. And knowing that there is an option that makes sense to keep the building in this, in this location for the future, and so that it would be feasible to leave it there and financially responsible to keep it in this position, makes me feel more confident regarding the approval of this addition. I have conceptually no issue with that. We just want to make certain that we're making a strong financial decision for the village. Correct. So let's wrap this up and this is what I'm going to ask of the three of you. I want the three of you to identify right now, going forward, what the action items are. What is it that you want to see?
I have a statement or a question.
Okay, and then I want, I'd like to have that response from all three of you.
This goes back to the AB and I wasn't here when we had approved the design and created these two different architectural drawings. And so I'm coming into this newer relative to the original approvals. Since then, the arboretum has continued to grow in terms of the friends of the arboretum, the paths, the usage, the concept of potentially moving the DPW. I recognize this is prime real estate and a long-term plan, I think, would suggest how you create a more engaging use of that land for the broader community that might suggest that if we put this work in, this bathroom doesn't stay where it's at. So let me ask this question. Is there any consideration for creating or investing here for a public bathroom now rather than a DPW bathroom now? That is on the site or close to the site of both the arboretum and the DPW that could currently get voters to be able to use publicly rather than just the DPW? Of course, these, you could shut them down when you need it specifically for your use, but I guess what I'm asking is, this goes back to the bigger picture planning for the arboretum and relocation, potentially, maybe not, very long-term plans. But is there any value to, rather than creating this structure for a hundred thousand, create a different structure for a hundred and twenty thousand, right? That has a broader use and we know if something ever happens with this building, we could have that there and have it be permanent.
If that was the plan, moving forward, then of course that probably couldn't be accommodated. But first, I think you guys need to decide what you want to do.
And it brings us back to an overall site plan for the entire area and what would that look like? And how do we maintain the security and the safety of a DPW facility that has very different requirements from what is surrounding it?
So this, these two plans right here are the easiest solution to putting an addition onto the building, given that all the electric, all the plumbing, drainage, water supplies, everything is already on that wall and all you need to be doing is just extending it out. So rather than having a satellite location of another building and then having to move all that stuff underground to accommodate.
Running utilities.
You're probably looking at more.
Yeah, yeah, Steve, you have.
I was going to say, you're relocating at least two and a half times. You know? And then a standalone facility, with the infrastructure, the plumbing, the power, all that stuff.
Also trying to find a place to put it.
Find a spot.
That would also allow us to still plug.
Minimum two and a half times.
Okay, so what about, just again, throwing out ideas. What about, again, because I wasn't part of the design work here and I was given two options, this or the other. What if that bathroom was front-facing towards the canal on the left side of the existing main garage where it was public-facing along the canal? And you might have a locked door structure that you can get in from the inside, but it's also a public space.
That would be another option, but we are looking also, this, these were first drawn up, knowing that we did not have rights to the canal court properties. So we're still working within those constraints.
And Fran Overmeyer also did the original assessment of the DPW building years ago. I mean, he, you know, this isn't just like, oh, how about here? You were saying from a very practical standpoint, all of the, you know, everything's right there.
Yeah.
And so you're literally just.
The easiest fit for us. Not to say that those are other options, but I think more planning would need to be done to accommodate.
Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I'm Corey from Southern Washington Avenue. Just something I want to mention about turquoise facilities. That works because they have a full-time dock master joining the sound of the station in a very active area, so they can control vandalism in that facility. And if you go to Brock Court or Spencer Court, they have similar situations where they have volunteer dock masters or volunteers that staff the facility that has the public bathroom. So they don't have the vandalism problems. What I'm really concerned about, if you have public bathrooms where the DPW is, it's in a remote facility at night, it's going to be a real problem. And it's in a very different context than in most other communities. So I still think, honestly, I think this is a sound plan. I, you know, I've thought it through and I like the plans because, you know, Zach and I talked for eight years about this very issue. I think it's a good investment to make and I think it doesn't hamstring you in the future if the garage needs to be updated for things like the lift that I know is obsolete and is at the end of its functional life.
Thank you. I agree with your comments because to simply say, oh, we're going to have a standalone building with bathrooms, you're not fully and properly activating the area, you know, as you say, those areas that you've just mentioned are fully activated areas.
Right.
You know, really addressing all sorts of needs and amenities for voters and tourists and all that. What you're doing is you're putting a public facility in, next to a secured facility, next to wooded areas. You have no monitors.
You're putting more wood people in when we are trying to secure ourselves.
Yeah.
Which is counterintuitive, you know?
We didn't really keep the DPW there. You could do a planning exercise that would redesign the trunk along the canal to make it public and enhance its use, but at the same time provide a security and a visual barrier so you don't have the public filtration problem of people walking into the yards or the apron where the trucks are.
Yeah, understood. No, I mean.
And that would be a cost-effective, sensible solution that would leverage the assets that you have to manage.
Totally get it, totally get it. Still need the bathroom, still, you know, that's where we are. You know, we're kind of talking about a lot of, lot of things that are not going to happen overnight.
Right.
Bathroom needs to happen.
But, yeah.
Five years ago, 10 years ago.
Again, I'm seven years into this.
I know.
Trying to keep, you know, something moving along because sewer's going to be a decade and then for us to finally start digging ground and doing something.
Your frustration is stemming from the fact that I have one year into it, I don't know all the back detail and these concept discussions are things that we haven't done before, right? Or at least I haven't done before. And so I'm looking at, again, an A and B plan that I had no idea that C and D were already thought about. Or, again, from a timing perspective, the question, you make a good point, you know, are we committed to this location for a good long time? And if the answer is yes, then we commit to it.
But we have to be committed to the location for quite a while, even if we want to move the building. I mean, that, that's.
For us to be moving anywhere could be more than a decade.
Yeah.
I wouldn't necessarily say that only because if you create a lumped-in capital plan and you start looking at ways to revitalize that space and all of a sudden you start talking about this not just as a village resource, but a town resource or a countywide resource or statewide resource, right? You start trying to introduce government model, right? We just saw today, I think Kathy Hochul had, Governor Hochul had announced forty-eight billion in additional funding for shovel-ready projects, right? We can have a shovel-ready project that could be a DPW, that could get funded. And if we get a bunch of money, sure, maybe we wasted this money, but if we get a bunch of money to do something.
It's not a waste because we are taking care of people who take care of us. It's never, we're investing back into our crew.
What I'm saying is.
It's not a waste.
Okay.
I don't feel that way.
It's a play on words. What I'm suggesting is, is if you put in a bathroom for a hundred thousand and then next year you get government money, it may feel like, hey, we should have held out for a year, we spent a hundred thousand dollars on a bathroom for one year.
Go for it until it.
Right.
Steve, yeah.
If you look at it that way, you put in a hundred thousand dollars this year for them and you get funding, then you could put in a public facility with that, the other money. And you would serve both.
And Canal Corp would probably help us get the funding too. I mean, that's something they want.
I was going to say, if any of you use a bathroom over there, would you use a bathroom over there? That's a better question. It's disgusting.
So what you, I don't think what either of you are trying to, what I'm trying to drive towards is a rationale to say, just get it done, right? And dismiss the other things that are concerning.
Okay, so let's do this because we've really had a lot.
But I'm still.
Missed your thought and then I want the three of you to say, how do we move forward?
Call the order, call the order.
Okay.
I can talk in a bathroom for two hours unless there's three out of five majority trustees who interrupt. So until I'm done, please let me continue.
We've spent a lot of time on this.
That's true, but it's an important bathroom. And I want to get to the point where I can vote yes or no.
Okay.
Right? So let's go back to the sewer question for a second. Regardless of the outcome of the, let's hypothetically say that we do some work and looking at the sewer and outsourcing sewer and now we don't need a flush truck. Does the structure of the existing building allow for the creation of what you need from a bathroom perspective within the existing structure?
No, if you're talking about buying the real estate by losing some of the sewer needed equipment because we're no longer doing sewer maintenance.
Yes.
Right now, we're already spilling over the edges because we are so at capacity. That real estate that we would find or that we would gain by losing that stuff would just be built in by the stuff that's sitting outside.
You wouldn't put a bathroom in that location is what you're saying. Do you have other stuff that should go in that location?
It'd be a tough call. You know, if that's our only option, might put a bathroom. But the separation is really what would limit us on being able to do so. It'd have to be well thought out and it's really.
That would be another question for Fran Overmeyer, you know?
Yeah.
Really, you know, just to look at spatial layout.
We're a four thousand square foot building, you know, that's got seven trucks that are trying to fill it, an office, all the equipment that goes along with trying to maintain this building. We do have a couple of outbuildings that, you know, do surface, it's cold storage. We are very limited on what we keep up there.
Yep. Conclusion being, if you have that space, you wouldn't want a bathroom in that space. You'd rather use it for the other things that could come in-house or reposition what you already have there so it's more useful.
Wouldn't that, would that be more practical?
It's a more complicated question to answer quickly. I would show you about if you want to come down and explore it.
Yeah, I would go with that.
It's, there's a lot of, the building's aged, I mean, so it would take a lot of work to adapt use of those for a different.
Is this one of those times where, where you'd be building outside of your basically clean land?
Yes.
It's easier than trying to get the inside?
Yes. Steve, remodeling versus building new?
You know, the reality of the utilities and where they are in that building to move and move a bathroom somewhere else would be very hard. Based on the physical makeup of where the kitchen and bathroom currently is, the plan that they put in place is the most efficient use of the utilities that exists.
Other things right there. It's just, there's, you know, basically just shifting it over to.
Maybe it would help for you to go, you know.
Yeah. I think it's a word.
Oh, no, we walked it out. I know, I remember what it looks like pretty well. Justin? Sure. So I, I think that we're, this is a good conversation to move ahead with the bathroom facilities. I think that part of the reason, to me, there are two reasons that discussions like this take so long. One is that we have not had a multi-year capital plan in the past and that's a prerequisite for making some of these bigger capital decisions. And the other thing is that I think that we can look harder to find different kinds of efficiencies. And as we're, you know, maybe a corollary to what you were saying, Dave, that, you know, you wouldn't use this space for the bathroom to cover the flush truck because you'd use it for other stuff, means that we have a different idea about the use of space if we didn't have that trunk, right?
And, and so I want to have that discussion before we go tearing down walls and, and building new ones in a certain configuration. And I think that, um, so that, that brings me to the action items about what we can do next here. Um, one thing is that there is, uh, we're talking about grants and, and funding opportunities. Um, there's a local government efficiency program in New York State that's specifically targeting, um, uh, technical and financial assistance, assistance to local governments, um, uh, for projects that achieve savings and improve municipal efficiency through shared services and municipal reorganization.
That's not what you think it is.
It might not be, but.
It's actually about, it's actually about looking at.
It's not entirely about dissolution.
It's dissolution. It's, it's definitely.
Well, I, I did, when I read this, it's not entirely about the solution. It does talk about that, but it's not limited to that. And it actually does talk about finding other kinds of efficiencies. So I'd like to look into that and see if they would consider something like consolidating sewer departments and creating greater efficiency by collaborating with the different municipality on that.
I.
Um, I, I do know that the sewer department is pretty much at capacity. Now, if they were to take on the responsibility of doing village sewer work, that means that they would probably have to hire more staff over there. Um, I'm not sure they're able to handle it.
Sure.
That's, that's a big question.
So that's one of your, one of the action items, because I think the three of you really need to come up with some action items from this. So we know where to go with this.
My respect for, because I'm not sewer. I'm not on page.
Oh, she's not sewer. Okay, she's not.
I'm not on page.
Okay. We're leaving Lily out of that piece.
I'm not on that.
So.
Yeah, David.
So, Justin, with regards to the sewer conversation that Zach and I just had, that regardless of the outcome of the sewer and the discussion of efficiencies, um, whether or not we're on board or not, the question that I think I'm hearing, and maybe we're making a long-term capital decision right now with regards to the plan, right? We have a consultant come in, they're going to say, hey, what do you think? Where do you want things, right? And for me to say, let's move forward with this bathroom, I want to also say, when that consultant comes in and says, hey, what are you doing with the DPW? And my response is going to be, we're leaving it there. Make the best use of that space you can and try to increase the vitality of it for residents along with the canal and property use of the space. This goes to what some of the conversations were, or maybe Bob, it drops the idea of relocating, right? It's this, and goes to Lily's point of if we're doing this, we're here for a while, right? So to me.
But define a while. See, that's, that's where I get a little hung up.
So, so the building is still aged, you know, there's still a lot of problems with it, which means that we, we really should be planning for a new building.
Well, this.
But after this accommodation.
Yeah.
Because there's no way that we're going to get a new building when we're taking out millions of dollars just to new streets. How much in debt are we willing to go to build?
And the town may be interested also in, in potentially doing something jointly with us for a facility. They could be. I mean, we should speak with the town. They're at capacity with certain things, you know, with sewer and, you know, their highway department. That might be a conversation to have with them. Is there a way that we can get an economy, maybe get funding because especially for grants, they love intermunicipal cooperation? Maybe that is another.
The state is questioning for a very, uh, stronger approach to shared services between.
Yes.
You know, state, county, um.
That's one following.
That's, it, it.
Without dissolution, without dissolution.
Without a doubt. And to, to that end, so this speaks to, you know, when you ask how long? Well, if we have an idea, let's get a bathroom in and within three to five years, we're doing something different. We're building buildings together with the town on the Gulf Road facility. We're doing something different with the Frog Pond area. I think there's some land over there. Who knows where else we might think of something? Or we're staying put. But if those are our three options, this goes back to if we spend a hundred thousand, frankly, a good amount of that is government money already to ARPA, right? Um, so, hey, let's use that money to get you guys to have some bathrooms. The point Lily that you made of time, right? Is it three to five years? Is it two to four or is it seven to ten?
Does that look like?
But, but the point is, is maybe it doesn't really matter if the way we're getting it done is to a lot of additional government money outside the village already. So if somebody comes in from the state or someone comes in from, you know, if it's outside funded, it speaks, we're not taking a three and a half million dollar mom now.
I would have taken a hit.
So if somebody else is participating in the funding of that, then yes, we may have just wasted, I'm going to use the word again.
I know.
Understand the connotation. Um, if we sent too much money in for a short period of time, we still got your bathrooms for that period of time. So I, I, I guess where my head is at is it sounds like that from your perspective, regardless of what happens with sewer, you need a bathroom and a shower. I think I agree with that.
And lockers.
And laundry.
Laundry.
I don't think in my head, whatever we put in here is ever going to be for the public. It just doesn't seem like it's a reasonable thing to think it will be. Either wrong location, wrong design, whatever, right?
Yeah, potentially. I mean, that's, that's, that's in the future. I don't have that answer.
I, I, I don't want to build this, I don't want to build this to the public as though we're going to use it eventually, the project for the public. I don't think that's true. I think if we end up using this space and relocating the DPW, then that grand plan leads to something else on this location, which probably goes to.
Could be anything.
Right, could be anything. And.
Be Walmart, oh, just trying.
So I, I guess where I'm at, my reservation's coming into it, I still have. ARPA money has already been dedicated to this project, is that right?
Well, we don't know. Uh, we, the previous board flagged it or earmarked it for this purpose. We don't know if we're bound by the decisions that board, if we decide to use elsewhere.
Okay.
I, Jeff actually answered that question. He said the board can vote any way they choose.
Any way we choose, okay. So then this goes to.
So you could rescind anything.
Yep.
Change it off.
Sure.
And remove it from the bathroom project for the DPW and direct it to something else. You could overturn the prior board's decision.
Okay. Do both these projects cost the same?
Um, hard to say.
Okay.
What, so, uh, there might be a more plumbing work done in one.
The bigger one?
Uh, the longer.
The, yeah, the one that's.
Yeah, the longer one. Is the longer one only on our property?
Uh, yes.
And which one did you all like better, the longer one or the shorter one?
This one, I don't know.
The shorter one because it's got a common wall and it also gets the, the, the toilets off of the shared wall with my office.
Right. I tend to like the shorter one too. So I don't know why, but it seems, okay. So you gotta get.
And, and Fran felt that one was more efficient.
You gotta get canal.
Yeah. Well, the common wall, where all the plumbing's going to be back to back, so the plumbing, uh, costs would be less.
All the underground plumbing that gets us to the sewer line, that can be reused for the public eventually.
Yeah, the building itself. It exists.
Okay.
That, that was actually part of that original discussion.
Okay.
That was the whole point. Not necessarily saying that's the bathroom we're using for the public, but that could be, we have it already plumbed. We have electric there, we have.
So going from where the dock is on the canal where the boat cleanouts, there's a pump there that runs to a drain that goes underneath the ground, maybe that'll be.
Coming through here.
Well, I, I just want, I guess, members of the public, if I were to move to adopt this, to know that it does change my perspective on how I think about the location of the DPW with regards to a long-term capital plan and the unlikely relocation, village-only funded, right? But if we get a whole bunch of other money from somebody else, sure, I'll entertain any idea. But this is a commitment, I think, to this location barring some significant additional outside capital, right?
There we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Justin, oh, I'm sorry, Lily.
Lily, do you want to go first? I've spoken.
Sorry. Sure. Right.
I just want to clarify, given some of the things that you've brought up, that I think it's very important that the decisions we make support the concept or the reality of having a village DPW.
Agreed.
I would want nothing to jeopardize as far as consolidating with the town or, I, I'm all for cooperation and helping each other out. But when we start consolidating buildings and that makes me very nervous and I, and I don't even want to consider. Sorry, I'm firm on that.
Yes.
So you do not want any dissolution yet.
Good.
So given what I'm, I am hearing and what I've heard from Dorothea regarding the feasibility, let's call it the initial feasibility of moving this facility, I feel a little more comfortable regarding, uh, the future of this building and the potential of it staying for a certain period of time to allow, uh, a, a reasonable return on the, a money that the village is investing, uh, in, in this facility. And so I think it is part of our commitment to the DPW, commitment to this building, commitment to this site where it has existed for the past, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five years successfully. And I would like to see that continue and so to that end, I would, I would want to approve the bathrooms, uh, plan with the most, uh, efficient, um, position with the showing the common wall. If you were doing this at home, you'd do the same thing. You'd put your bathroom on the other side of the kitchen, you know, whatever, where, where the plumbing is. And that's what they're doing. And so I agree with that. The sewer situation, I think, is an entirely separate, uh, conversation that, you know, if you and Justin want to carry that out, bring it back.
Yeah, if you guys want to look into that and bring it back, that'd be great.
But my concern is.
Need a bathroom.
Anything that would erode the position of the village, uh, financially going forward as far as their sewer rents and, and because we're, it's all tied into our budget and, and salaries and, and everything, building, building functions. Um, so I'd, I'd like more information on that before I could. Yeah, so I don't think I'd bring anything to the table regarding your sewer discussion.
I wouldn't yet.
But I mean, I think that's, that's really, that, that's kind of where I was going. That's, that's the charge, but you dropped out of sewer, so it's the two of you.
Yeah, I'm dropped out.
You guys, yeah, not, not big. But, but, you know, I, I, if you want to look into it, I think that's important, you know, to bring it back to the board and say, when I hear it, these are potential options that we'd be looking at, you know? I, great, you know?
Not sure who you talk to.
Well, they, that's, you know, they'll.
Let's focus on, well, it may still be a connected issue, Justin, to you. I, I think I may have disconnected it in my own head. Okay, any thoughts?
Okay. Um, I guess a, a couple of things. It, it's helpful, you know, I, I agree with trustee Marshall and, and Lantry that, you know, if we invest in this, this would be an investment into the current DPW infrastructure. And I guess that coming into this discussion, Mayor, I, I was a bit confused about your comments at the, um, at the public event about moving the DPW because to me, that kind of com, that kind of comment doesn't really make sense if it's like ten or fifteen years out, you know, I, I wouldn't.
I guess if you had been there and you had heard my speech, I said I, I was addressing it as a vision, as a possibility. It wasn't anything cast in concrete. Nothing has been done other than, and I use the word a vision, you know, that this is, could be a possibility. You know, I think as elected officials, it's important that we obviously take care of what's in front of us and what we need to do, but we also have to be looking to the future and just looking at possibilities. And that was how it was framed very much.
Okay.
In that speech.
Okay. I, I was a little bit confused about that.
Yeah, sorry to confuse you with that.
But I guess, um, I would say if we're investing in this bathroom, my understanding would be that it's a little bit less possible that we're going to move the building in the next five years, right? Because I wouldn't want to dump that much.
Even if we want to move, we're going to do it, you know? I mean, it's like.
The, the other, um, I, I guess my, my concern with the, the bathroom and the, for efficiency, um, that concern still remains for me. Um, I don't believe that it's a great use of the ARPA funds, as I think I expressed on the previous board as well, um, uh, before trustees Cove and, and Marshall joined. I, I don't think that the type of kind of windfall capital from the ARPA funds should be used for, um, or the one-shot capital from ARPA funds should be used for things where we really just neglected the maintenance on the DPW building. There, there should have been a plan in place much longer ago, um, to allow for the incremental upgrade of these facilities. And I think that it doesn't put us in a great position to, to plan capital needs in the future. If we just kind of take that kind of capital when it comes along, right? That doesn't lead to, um, good budgeting practices. So I'm, I'm still not entirely in favor of using ARPA for that. Um, and I guess that, um, as a way around that to, to move forward with the bathroom, um, more quickly, I, I do think that looking for efficiencies might make sense and, um, you know, that might just be a, a discussion with the town to, you know, start out by looking at some costs, um, in terms of what they pay relatively for sewer. Um, and if they do it more efficiently or less efficiently than us, I, I'd just be interested in that as a data point.
Um, you think the, the answer to that and the direction we go with that would be, uh, determine whether or not you think the DPW at that size location would need a bathroom of this size and scale? Like, so for example, we do, you know, we do all this work and we come back six months later and like, yeah, let's not do it. Well, let's do it. Even, even if we were to do it, do we still need, are we still going to make a commitment to that site in the long-term capital plan, right? Which we're going to have to make decisions on. Do we make a commitment to that site and do we make a commitment, you know, to using this space for that?
How, I, I think it, it does impact on the plans because I think we're talking about staffing and I think we're talking about the normal duties of, of the staff that are on payroll. And so I would just like to, to figure that out, you better understand of, of what a DPW is doing.
So regardless of whether things are consolidated with the town or in terms of helping out with sewer and that's all offloaded, we still need a bathroom, we still need a shower, we still need a laundry, we still need all of this. We still do. That's, I keep coming back to that. Regardless of all the other rest of the discussion, this is still where we are, period. And, you know, ARPA funds have been used for all kinds of things. I mean, you know, the town put in pickleball courts, they did, I mean, Brock, you know, they use, they're used for all different types of things.
They were used for a lot of one-shot things.
Yeah.
They do, used for bonuses, they were used for all kinds of building projects. I mean, honestly, I agree, it would be nice if we had done the maintenance all along and had taken care of this.
Didn't happen, here we are.
We don't have it, we did not have it, we didn't do it. This is an opportunity to do it without a bidding pick on the budget.
And if you start planning for it now, how long is it going to take to take small portions of the budget on a yearly basis and accumulate that to a point where we can actually build something? By the time you get there, what might be a hundred thousand dollars today might be two hundred thousand dollars in ten years or, or more. It's like, I, I feel like you're always going to be reaching, you'll never, never get there.
Yeah, okay, one last time and we need to really wrap this up.
So be quick, just to share some history, we did look at this before and it's a very different financial structure that the town has because of the scale of the town. I think the other thing we really need to consider is that, the, one of the reasons the sewer department generates a lot of revenue for the village is because a significant part of the district is outside of the village. You get revenue from within the current hundred and eighty houses plus all the townhouses that comes into our system because you control that sewer district. And it's, it's, it is a financial benefit for the organization. I also think in terms of the investment in this bathroom, you're getting a bigger bank here, you're providing a bathroom for the sewer department and the DPW. You need it for the DPW anyway, but it's more justifiable because you have.
We can use sewer, yeah. Yeah, good point, thank you.
Really.
Yeah, let's wrap this up. Let's wrap this up. One last thing and then we're going to have action items and.
My, my understanding of the, to address the last point, and I, I think something that's important for the board to understand, uh, my understanding is that a sewer department cannot be used as a cash cow. The, the money that comes in for sewer rents must be used for sewer purposes. And when I glassed some of the case law, that's what I saw.
Yeah.
And I just want to double up on that, which is the size of your sewer is actually a disadvantage rather than an advantage. Sorry to disagree, um, but the bigger the sewer is, yes, the more revenue you have coming in. And yes, the bigger your DPW can be, but then the bigger your building needs to be on the canal, on, on real estate to take care of. So there's an optimal size relative to the need and I don't think having a DPW at this location at this size, to your comment, Zach, regardless of whether or not the sewer stays or goes, the use of the existing space would be suboptimal for a series of bathrooms and showers. This design is two toilets, two showers, is that correct?
Correct.
With a bank of wash. Regardless of whether or not, how many employees do we have currently?
Uh, eight of us.
There's eight. How often do you have a line of more than two?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So whether or not it's six, so whether or not we move the sewer or don't move the sewer, if you have six or eight employees, regardless of whether or not you have the sewer, the problem still exists that you want two showers and two bathrooms, right? And when somebody comes in to interview you, does anybody ask to see your facilities or do they come on board the next day and say, what did I just accept? How does that go?
So when we interview down at the shop, the bathroom is pretty obvious. You can't miss it. Where we hold our interviews, our regular, the regular, you can't miss it. People do accept the job regardless.
Okay. Interesting.
Not comfortable with it, but they do it, they want a job.
People want the job.
They want the job, I mean.
There are benefits that come along with having this job that, you know, you kind of, you know, dehumanize yourself in a way to say that this is justifiable for this position.
I'm going to prioritize bathroom facilities probably ahead of southern.
If you, if you use hiring office employees as an example, interviewing people that are coming right now, so yes, you want the job. FYI, you can't use the bathroom all the time. You might have to go outside or get in your car and go to the gas station. I mean, employees aren't equal. So.
Right.
But it's good for the people in the office. Should be good for this DPW as well.
Good point. Okay. So, so we need to close this out. We, you know.
We're getting very close.
Okay. I'm hoping. Action items.
So the next question that I have is, Justin, with regards to financing and ARPA and sewer. The sewer has capital, right? We have, we have reserves.
It's flush.
Right? And, and that's good. So we have capital there to use, right? How much of it could be dedicated to this? I don't know. Let Dorothea share those. If we don't use the ARPA funds, we'd have to use our own. And then we can reuse the ARPA funds if there's something else we need. But there's really nothing more that, like from a priority perspective, yeah, we need this. So, and so, for example, what is it? 60 grand, 50 grand of ARPA was being used?
Fifty from our president.
So, so that 50, now, instead of next year putting this bathroom in the budget and having 50 there, we use the ARPA and then we have that 50 in the budget for something else, which I think in how we did the budget last year means it's going to go to reserves and we're going to get to dictate where it goes based on long-term plans rather than just an open-ended vote in ARPA. So realistically, I think we have a little more control of the capital if we're funding reserves with the excess that we save on next year's budget. Do you would agree? Right? I don't know. Hearing everything tonight and just thinking about, again, the biggest part of tonight's conversation that I think I got out of this is that there's a commitment to this location for the DPW unless for some reason there's a windfall, right, from other money.
In the lottery.
Right? Fine. Fine. Right? But when we go into the long-term capital plan and they start asking, you know, what do we think? Where do we want stuff? What do you want to put in the plan? Relocation to the DPW will not be on my list if I move to support the bathroom. And I think that's okay.
For now.
But this is our footprint.
For now, yeah.
Right?
It is what it is.
Okay. All right.
You got to work with what you have.
So before we spend $100,000 in this meeting, would we be able to, now that we have that understanding about the DPW facility location, which is a big movement tonight, I would say that we put this on the next meeting along with the, the funding discussion and talk about where the funding comes from. And then all five of us can vote on it.
Can I just add? I know $100,000 keeps getting thrown around. That is just a number that was pulled out of.
Right. Until it goes to.
There is no number that has been put on this. Yeah. We are not, we are not to that point yet because there are too many variables to figure out before you.
Till you get a design, until you decide.
Okay.
It has to go to design.
What do we need to move this project forward to get a bit?
You need to get the canal corp to agree to the thing.
Thank you. Which, which was, I believe, discussed at the, brought up at the very beginning of this discussion.
You need that.
So we're going to circle back because the one that's the most efficient really would be, has the two feet of the canal corp.
So you need that.
So that's something that, as I said earlier, Scott Harder can help with that because he has that, that connection with canal corp.
I was going to interrupt you.
Yeah. So that would be the direction to both of them.
What's the second item that we need?
If that comes through, you can get the canal corp to agree to the two feet, then you would say, I want to do this more efficient bathroom. Then it goes out to.
It goes out to bed.
No, no, no. First, we would have to have Fran put a little more detail.
Well, that's true. Fran would have to.
So Fran would revise, is it 1.2 version? I believe it is.
Yeah, I think it's the.
A2, whatever.
No, it's 1.1.
1.1. 1.1. You would have to revise that to a point that, you know, start developing plans for.
It would be spec'd out.
What's the cost on that, you think?
Um, that's kind of, you know, I can't say.
Couple thousand?
Oh, from Fran?
Yeah, from Fran. Maybe a little more, maybe.
Maybe.
Tenish?
No. No, 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 no.
I don't want to speak on it because I.
We'll, we'll talk to Scott.
We'll, we'll talk to Scott.
We'll, we'll circle back on that.
Okay.
Look at that. But that's the next step.
So tonight, two action items. Justin, you and I can continue to look at this sewer conversation, right? And then, action two, go talk to canal corp.
Yeah.
Could I ask for one, just question of Fran, if you could, when you talk to her? And you've already answered the question tonight. I'm sorry. Could you ask, is there anything that can provide the same amount of resources and use that if, when designed could be less? Or is this the least, is this the best leased project?
I'll ask if there is a fair minimum version of that.
Just curious. But if it's only an almo, like, I don't.
You just ask for the bare minimum.
Okay.
Just, and he, he designed this to accommodate a fluctuating staff of male and female right now. You know, we're six to two, male and female. If there were changes, you know, that will, that plan will accommodate that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you don't ever, I think you always want to be able to not care.
So really, I mean, that's, but, you know, a lot of that can be changed with finishes too. If we go with, you know, a concrete slab with paint on the floor.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we can go to the school district and see if they're doing the remodel and plus some new returns. I don't know.
Oh, Lordy. We're, we're going in on a level of detail. Let's keep moving.
Can I just?
Please, let's close this out. We have our action items. Thank you.
Well, can I just modify one action slightly? Dave and I can, can look at this. I think that with this understanding, I could also support this. Dorothea, I'm wondering if you or Alexandria could help to procure one piece of information, which would be the relative cost of our sewer services compared to the town's. So we bill based on inflow gallons of water, right? So there's, there might be something, a flat kind of a fee associated with that plus a per gallon. Compare that to what the town charges and give that.
Correct. That's something actually that we're going to be coming back to the board because some of the thoughts on efficiencies, the way we bill isn't, I'm not thrilled with. I'd like to go to a different way of billing and then have it end up on the tax bill, which is another question.
And that, that came up this last year.
But in the meantime, we'll check how they bill in comparison to.
Yeah, just send that to the board. I think that would go a long way. Maybe it's not worth having this discussion, but that would, let's figure out what it costs first.
Sure. It's a, it's a starting point for things. Yep, you know?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
And I just want to say, like, a lot of the discussions tonight, it's, for example, on the sewer, we just always want to challenge and understand, what are we doing? Is it the most efficient? Are there other things that we should consider? Are there things that, you know, I might bring to the table or any of us might bring to the table that has, hasn't been thought about for five years? Or maybe there's institutional knowledge, we don't know. But I've been sitting here for nine months and not even, right? So, so these are the reasons why these conversations get had. And I think we arrive at better decisions. And so I think we're moving in the right direction and we all want to have bathrooms.
I do appreciate.
Okay.
Okay, great.
We have a five-minute bathroom break before the central three hours now.
Okay. And we're okay for Scott to, to the canal corp, right?
Yeah, the, the direction is, and Jeff, our attorney as well, because, you know, obviously we have some kind of agreement.
Yeah.
That was the action.
All right.
Okay. So, motion to, what do we want to?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, 10?
Five, I think.
Okay, five. That's good. Okay. Motion to adjourn for five minutes.
Second.
Stereo again.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lanter.
Aye.
Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion back.
Okay. Can you pause, please?
Yep.
Are we, we have everything going?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to bring the meeting back to order.
Second.
We'll call. Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Trustee Lanter.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion back. Okay. So let's see. Next up, the update on the tree ordinance. As you know, Jeff's not here tonight.
Right.
So.
Was he the one that was going to update us before the thing in the pack?
I think there was still some questions with the board. He needs more instruction.
Yeah, I think, I think it was a little more instruction and also, you know, Lisa's not here and I know she wanted to have some additional input. So.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, you know, and, and I'm thinking we should just bring it back then for December.
Okay.
You know? Okay.
That was quick.
It happened, you guys. I know. Okay. Then next up is consideration of the village administrator role.
Sure. So it's an item that I added to the agenda and actually something that I've, I've been thinking about for a few years. And I went to NICOM a while ago and saw a session on this. And I thought it was an interesting model for, for villages. And really, going back quite a while, I've been thinking about the, you know, really the, what we want with the village long-term and the sustainability of all of the elected roles. And I think that, you know, something that trustee Keating mentioned actually when he was on board was the issue of the mayoral salary. There's, there's a lot that the mayor does and there's a lot that Mayor Plummer does. And I think the, the salary that we're currently offering makes that difficult to really find a lot of people who are interested in, in that role. And we appreciate everybody who steps up, but I, I think that we need to look at making sure that we're as inclusive as possible and getting the biggest pool of people who want to step in and serve. The mayoral role is, is currently divided into a couple of different facilities. One is as a member of the board and the other one is essentially the chief executive officer of the village. And I, I think that, you know, if you're looking for something along the lines of what we're currently paying, around $14,000, which we talked about previously, it's, it's a little bit for, for quite a bit of work, especially when you start talking about the, the executive function of the job. So things like looking at the, the longer-term capital plans. And I did share a, a document with the board that anybody can find on, on NICOM 2 about managing Takahoe, I think it was. And in, in that specific case study, what they showed is that, you know, they, they looked at the manager model. They, they talked to some of the board members and some of the board members said, you know, I'm not sure if I would really step up to be mayor given the, the current job description, given the, everything that's involved with it, especially in the administrative side. They wanted someone who could, you know, really take control and make sure that village operations are, are efficient. They wanted to make sure that, you know, they had good management alignment with a, a long-term capital plan. Actually, I don't think they had a capital plan, but then the, the village manager came in and then helped them to establish one and put it in place. So it was a very positive case study. And based on what they were saying in NICOM and based on what I was reading in that study and looking at what we have in, in our own village, I, I wonder if, you know, my, my thought is that if, if I envisioned where I'd like to be in 10 or 15 years for the village in terms of achieving something that is sustainable, that's efficient, that really works for everybody, I, I think that this might be a model worth pursuing.
So what's, what's prompting you now specifically with our village?
As I mentioned, this is something that I've really been mulling over for a few years. And I, I think that in terms of achieving sustainability, efficiency, and getting the best outcome, when I envision those 10 years down the road, I think that this is worth talking about.
So the concerns are sustainability and efficiency?
I think we could expand that to inclusiveness and making sure that we've got the broadest pool of applicants. And I, I think that also in terms of, you know, it really is kind of a bifurcated role between the political and the administrative. And I, I think that when you look at our electoral process, a lot of people think about the political and discuss the political. And that's very different from talking about financial planning and administrative oversight. And I think that, you know, if you look at villages like Fairport, East Rochester, both of those use the, the manager model. And I, I think that there are some benefits to, to the approach they've chosen.
No, I, I think, I think you're, you know, raising some interesting points, Lily. My first question that popped in my head was, this is a permanent job for an individual. In other words, they would be hired, it's not like a four-year term or anything. This is a, you have a job and this is a.
Well, civil service.
Correct. It would be.
It's civil service.
It would be a civil service position. You would have to apply to civil service to get the position. You'd have to write a justification, you'd have a paper along with the job duties. So you would have to justify to them why you feel your village needs that position.
Okay. So for this individual, this would be a business.
This would be a job.
A business. Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Just like, well.
I'm pointing every.
It's the job you're doing essentially.
It would be a job.
Okay. That would continue indefinitely until they retired, if that, if everything worked out. So that's consistency.
Like any employment.
Okay.
Any employment. So it offers consistency.
Offers the. And it offers consistency with the assumption now that we don't have that. I mean, in other words, I'm trying to, you know, find the, the water level here for, for the discussion.
Yeah.
And the underpinnings of the discussion. I, I am familiar with, with that lecture at NICOM and that model, having been to NICOM too on a number of occasions. And this particular model has been used with much larger villages typically. For example, Takahoe is at least four times our size. Fairport, much, much larger. East Rochester and all, all of those villages and actually almost every other village that I've ever looked at and also with additional discussions about this at NICOM, is they're typically villages that have a larger population. They have far greater levels of oversight and management and amenities. You know, for example, Takahoe, they manage the library system. Takahoe, there's, they manage their, the whole recreation department and have a recreation facility like the town. You know, so there's many more moving parts typically. And again, East Rochester has their own fire department, excuse me, police department. That's what I meant to say. Fairport, you know, has, you know, the harbor master, a lot of amenities along the waterfront. They also have their own electric company, you know. So there's, they're typically, it's a good model. I mean, I, I can see a lot of benefits to the model. My takeaway from, you know, NICOM as well is that it's a strong model for larger villages typically that have many, many more layers essentially of management and, and oversight. So I think that's a consideration as well, you know? Because I, I don't dislike the model. I mean, I think it's a good one. It's just, it's just, how does that really measure fit, you know? Yeah.
I think that is the, that is a good point. And I agree with you that, you know, I, I looked and I think it's about 10% of villages in, in New York State are using the manager model. And I do agree that most likely, most likely are larger and more complex than ours. They also tend to be, I think I saw more downstate.
They're definitely more downstate. The model actually originated downstate.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think that, you know, that said, I, I think that it's still worth the discussion to see if it can be made, you know, for its, for its merits in a village like ours, especially if it's used in conjunction with combining other roles. So in the NICOM handbook, there's a very brief section of this model as well. And it, it talks about how smaller villages could use this, especially by combining roles such as manager clerk, manager treasurer, something like that. And, and based on, on doing something like that, you might be able to achieve the efficiency that would allow it to work in, in more cash-constrained villages such as ours.
I know Hilton actually has the village manager, which is basically it's corporate steroids.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just, and, and actually in our code, in terms of, you know, the responsibilities for the village clerk, it mirrors essentially a lot of the language already in a village management model.
Correct.
You know? And I know Jeff, you know, Jeff really wanted to be part of this discussion and he, he really, he said there's more moving parts than, you know, we maybe are aware of just in terms of how we would even approach this. And so I, I would obviously defer to our attorney, you know? He was, sorry you couldn't be here. Yeah.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I think it's interesting. I, I guess, a few quick thoughts. Obviously, right now, the responsibilities of the mayor seem to be, or at least as often as I may see you, far here, fairly close to a full-time job, right? I don't know if you're here full-time, but it feels like.
She's pretty much here full-time.
Yeah. But I also think it's because we're really, we're really digging deeper into some things.
I think we've been project-heavy and the mayor has been here. And I will say, of all the mayors I've worked under, and it's not disparaging any mayor, because that's just a little municipality, I see her far more than I've seen other mayors. And it depends on the municipality and what's going on, how often the mayors are involved.
What I'm, I guess where I'm going with that is, you know, when somebody commits a lot of time and the consideration for that or the salary for that is not able due to constraints, right, able to reflect the time and the effort, right? And I'm not suggesting anybody out there, like, it's outcome-oriented. It's just, you won an election, you're the mayor, you have power and capacity to do things different than the, with other, your trustees. And one of the questions that might be, and this is to Justin, the comment, are there people who would like to be in that same role who cannot? Because they understand the time commitments relative to the compensation and.
I've made this decision about the level of commitment I'm willing to make in this job. It doesn't mean anybody else would make that same level of commitment.
That's right.
And based on where I was coming from when I campaigned and won the election. And based on where I was coming from when I campaigned and won the election, there were certain things that I knew that we, I wanted to look at and address, you know, whether it was internal systems here maybe that we looked at, or, you know? And that's just part of, you know, how I'm seeing my role, that I don't, everybody has a different lens in terms of how they would see, you know, how they would serve and in what capacity.
So this goes to the...
And that was a, that was a very, just to finish off, one last thing. That was a very deliberate and conscious decision on my part. And I want to make that very clear.
So this goes to this question about the model, which is, and I don't know the answer because all I've done is read this article so far, right? To what end, in the work that you've done, anybody here already on this, do you see a role of the mayors that you would lose the capacity for? So I think budget officer is one of them, right? Aren't you currently the budget officer? Is that right? Under New York Southern?
Well, yeah, yeah. In other words, I would present the buzz, you know, it's prepared and then it's presented by the mayor.
Right. Presented by the mayor, but it's still created by the clerk.
Treasurer.
So treasurer. So one of the concerns that we have is what happens when, right? Dorothea, you said yourself, and I'm not, hopefully not doing an HR faux pas, but you said yourself, there's going to be a day that you're not here.
Correct.
And we need somebody and to offer compensation and consideration to come in and take on this role, or the long one, to have consistency, that if their roles and responsibilities are some of the roles and responsibilities that currently through NICOM are the mayors, but effectively we're doing in-house, clerk or the treasurer anyhow, I guess what I'm asking is, what roles and responsibilities in this model do you feel like you wouldn't be doing? I don't even know if, I don't know what's getting transitioned from point A to point B, other than having a role that's a little bit higher on the pedestal from a management perspective for employees and HR matters, which is perfectly fine by me, and giving them some consideration that may, with those additional roles and responsibilities, get as somebody that can be consistent, right? And anyway.
I'd like to see to that, because I think, and you've actually touched on something dear to my heart. I think that you need to have systems, you need to have pieces in place where people can step in, they know what's expected, they know how to do it, you know, it's part of systems analysis and, you know, defining the scope of things, and making sure that the next person coming along, there's no vagueness there, that you know that you can step in. And I would say that that has been really, over the last, since I've taken office, we have been working every single thing. There's not one thing that we haven't touched in terms of looking at procedure, systems, templates, what if lightning hits somebody tomorrow, can we get this done, you know, all of that, because they really didn't exist in that way. So I see that actually just, just very narrowly, what I can, what I can do, because I'm trained in systems analysis and I'm trained in that stuff. And we've, you know, we've done a lot of stuff, just even, you know, you don't see it, but we know it because it's in-house. You know, we have the purchase orders, we never had purchase orders, we never, you know, the online, you know, we never, you can pay taxes online. You know, we were streamlining all kinds of processes and procedures in-house, so anybody coming in, it's not in someone's head, you know? It's not the person who just does this one task. It's, and you know, you're trained in this stuff too. So that, I think, is a huge piece of frankly making everybody more productive and everybody's job easier. That's the goal. So, you know, maybe I won't have to come in as much, you know? In other words, we start to get these systems in place, and it becomes something that just as a practical matter, we don't have to think about anymore even, it's just we know what to do.
Right.
And I know, and you've implemented some things as well.
We're, we're working on the deputies, having the deputies come up to speed and know the jobs, you know? The point, someday I won't be here. I don't know when, but at some point I won't be here.
But the pieces will be in place.
The pieces will be in place. The point is not to lose the knowledge if I walk out the door. That's a key thing. Somebody needs to know how to put the stuff together, know how to do the tax bills, collect this. There's a certain portion. Have we gotten, have, we've had people in those roles learning, sometimes it's work, sometimes it's not. And I think we actually, and I've said to the mayor, I think we are moving in the right direction. And pretty soon, I think we're going to see a lot of bang for a buck with staff.
Oh, yeah, I think I definitely, I can see that even, just even in these last several months. And then, you know, we're interviewing now, you met a candidate today, suberrally qualified. You know, if we get the, the internal pieces and systems in place, I think that no matter who steps in as mayor in any position, we now have templates, we now have things that just simply didn't exist anymore.
And the point, I think the other point is, if the mayor isn't here on a regular basis, and that's the concern, someone having that kind of dedication, when you have, we function a little differently here than other municipalities, but if the mayor's not here, that's near exact.
Yeah.
And that's really how it goes.
Yeah. We're, that's, you know, in between, yeah.
Yeah, just to reiterate, you know, I do appreciate what everybody is doing, and this is not a criticism of any one person. If anything, I think that it's a testament to how much Dorothea has done and how she's already doing some of these roles. And I think that, you know, the changes that you've mentioned, mayor as well, seem like ones that are very valuable, and I wouldn't want those to get lost. And I think that one of the ways to achieve that with this model is by having a persistent figure who is structurally accountable to the entire board, so that these things can be put in the books and evaluated by all the trustees in a slightly different way.
Yeah, well, I mean...
Not that that doesn't all happen now, but I just think...
No, and I think you're raising good points, but we already even have this in the code for the village clerk position. The village clerk shall report directly to the mayor and the village board of trustees, just the levels of accountability. I mean, it's a job title, I mean, I understand where you're going with it, but I think, you know, I have no problem exploring this at all, but I think we have a lot of pieces in place, and maybe we just need to talk through it as we are, but also, I'm not sure, you know, I guess, I'm not sure what that brings us when we're getting closer to getting things to where we, we really think are a good place for the village and a village of this size, you know? And I'm not, I'm not saying no at all, I really am not, because I actually like the model, and I talk, talk to mayors and, you know, I know the mayor of East Rochester, I know about their model there, I know the mayor of Fairport, you know, a lot of, lot of different moving parts there. And I just don't know, I mean, it's kind of a big thing in a little village, when we already have a lot of this already aligned, you know, in alignment, and just refining and making sure we're more efficient.
One of the opportunities with a model like this is the ability to define exactly what is transitioning, right, from a role and responsibility perspective. And I think the initial fear, at least I would, if I was in a mayoral position, it would be like, oh my gosh, there, you know, there's inappropriate words for being state immune, right? This idea that all of a sudden I've lost the capacity to do what I do well, or what I got elected to do, or somehow something's being taken away. I think there's another way to think about it, which is there may be some responsibilities that are currently already being done and completed by Dorothea, that if we actually put in a manager model, where you now are, for example, the village manager with budget responsibility and other things, there's consideration that would come with that additional responsibility, right? That then is more easily parlayed to the next person coming in to ensure the quality of the effort goes well beyond the current administration and prior administration, and it has persistency to it. And so one of the, one of the opportunities here is to not just say yea or nay, but it's to say what is already being done, what could realistically also be done, right? Not with the intent to take away the ability of the mayor.
I'm not even looking at it that way. I'm really not.
Right.
I'm not. I guess I'm all, I guess I work. No, not really, I, you know?
But, so I think what it does is it opens up an opportunity for consideration and a tenure where you have somebody doing much of what's already being done, but that has a responsibility to the whole board, right? And you don't have to say all the things included in the Takahoe model, right? You could just throw in the budget, you could throw in maybe HR responsibilities, right? Other things.
I guess.
Because you do those things already.
Yeah.
And that will lead to consideration, and that leads to...
So you're basically looking at a change of title and a further refinement of responsibility?
Let me throw this suggestion out to the world, just, you know, I think as a whole, the village needs to look, I think at one, some point, you might not know everything I do.
Yeah.
You guys don't know really truly my whole job, which I get.
But right now, it's not our responsibility.
Which you're now worried about, because as long as it gets done, the mayor knows what's...
The mayor's, it's under your supervision.
I, I work for the mayor and I serve the board.
Right.
That's how it's currently set up, which really means I work for everybody and I serve the village.
And that is identified in our code.
Right. But I think overall, when we look at all the titles, we look at all the jobs, because we have disparage in salaries and things across the board. I think we need a full salary survey of all the positions.
Yeah, we've been talking about that.
Look at all the titles that are out there. Look what titles are appropriate for the village, because you might want to put this in, and civil service might go, you're too small for this. Because they did that.
They have the final say, and that's important, I don't know if you're aware, civil service always has the final say.
They do.
When you submit to them.
Because everybody here is a civil service employee, so they do have that final say. So that's, if you're looking at, that would be step one, civil service, you know, would they grant that title?
Okay, yeah, yeah, really, yeah. Thanks. So I think what the mayor just stated earlier, what was going on in my head, what we're really talking about is, for instance, it could be just a title change. In other words, now your title changes to village manager or whatever, the way they, so now you have a different title, and, and basically it's the same, but you have a different title in this life, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's a very slight change in who, how the channel of responsibility, rather than mayoral, right? To the board, it's the board.
Right. So, I mean, I'm glad, I think it is a good discussion, but I know Jeff really does want to be part of this, because he, he sees other sort of legal elements and other moving parts. So my, my suggestion would be, let's bring this back, make sure that Jeff's here, Lisa, you know, that we have the full board, you know, that kind of thing.
Yep. And like I said, I think it goes parts and parcel, looking at all the duties we have, doing the salary survey.
We talked about that.
Hilton just did it. They have the village manager role.
If you could send that job description or anything that you've got on Hilton to the board too, though.
I'll, you know, because they had to do it, again, it was by code, it's a very unique position, but really, as she says, it's just a clerk on steroids, but she, closure, she has actual control over the DPW.
Right, right.
I'm sorry.
How big Hilton, Hilton's bigger.
Hilton's much bigger, they have a person rec, they have...
Yeah, they have a lot more oversight of things.
Anyway, if the board's in agreement, I think, beginning of the year, we should look at doing a whole salary survey to see where we are, what titles are out there, what we have in comparison, just to make sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing, but then...
Because it, it does affect everything we do, between hiring, letting go, changing jobs, doing...
And retention.
This is a question.
Retention, no, sorry. I was meant to...
Go ahead.
Both in my mouth, yeah.
Retention, and also me having to constantly come back to the board and ask for MOU or whatever, because, you know, we're constantly trying to catch up.
Yeah, yeah, you were going to say...
I was just going to suggest, so that's a great idea, like the whole reassessment of HR salaries, compensation, to make sure we're doing right by everybody. My question today is, is that currently a mayoral responsibility, or is it a clerk responsibility? Who officially has that responsibility within the law?
It would be the clerk.
It would be me, because I'm HR.
So you are HR?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so these are the sorts of things that I...
Sure.
Okay. Well, so perhaps what we can do then is, I think that we're on the same page that we'd like to include Jeff, we'd like to continue the discussion, be great, Lisa, we're here too, so maybe we just bring this back. I don't know if we need, if this line we want to address in the December meeting, which is getting pretty loaded.
I think it's pretty loaded.
I think it's, I think it's important to talk about this as we go into the budget. So I wonder, do we want a separate meeting for this at some point, a kind of workshop to talk about roles and responsibilities, or...
Well, we could tie it into one of our first budget meetings, if that makes sense.
Yeah, why don't we kick it off?
Then we can, I can start the survey.
One that Jeff can make.
One Jeff can make. I can start the survey, see what we can have available for the board to do.
Yeah, that way you're bringing...
Because that ties also into salaries, it's also part of...
And you're bringing information in that, that's hard information.
It would be...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hang on one second, I know, Zach, you had something quick to...
I just wanted to add, so right now I'm interviewing for a new employee to fill the open spot at the DPW. At some point, and I'm hoping it will be before December 12th, I'll be able to get you guys together to approve a hiring or something, if we move the law a little past, maybe we can consolidate some of the...
We'll sort through that, we'll sort through that. There's some research that needs to be done, thank you.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind putting it on the agenda, just as a single line item in December, just to ask Jeff like a couple of real quick bullet point questions, like, if we wanted to pursue this, how complicated is it? Let him talk for five minutes and then be done until we actually talk.
Okay, so we could put it in as like an attorney review or, you know, attorney update or something?
Yeah.
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 I just wanted to hear the legal side or something.
He could even send out a memorandum to the board.
And we'd be even an email from him.
I was just going to say, we can, why don't we have the action item for him to follow up on this, based on the discussion?
But if he wanted, I mean, for...
You know what?
Well, you know, this way they can ask questions.
Yeah, and it's cheaper. It's too public, so that other, I think this is also, the reason we're having this not in an attorney-client session, but in public meetings, is because this is really something that affects...
Yeah, and everybody can ask questions.
Five minutes to, yeah, I mean, I think ultimately what it is, that we have a lot of decisions to make. We basically craft the role and the rules, but it would be great to hear his...
All right, well, I'll throw it for right now, January budget meeting tentative for the first one.
Yes.
I think that's what Jeff will do for the next one.
Yeah. So this might be another opportunity for two trustees, or even three, because we could publicly notice them, to have this specific discussion regarding this model, this manager model, and come back to the full board with, you know, recommendations or more information, or, but if we try to handle it, I think in a regular meeting, we've just...
No, I think that's where we said, put it to a budget meeting.
Yeah, and I think we've got so much in budget, I'm also having to...
Well, the first meeting's more the rollout, and I think it would relate to salaries positions, I think it would be, you can make it.
I think it'd be into the budget, okay.
I think it would be...
That'd be the point. Give one meeting and then we're just sort of, I know, tailing and...
Yeah.
I hear you. Okay, uh, let's see, number items.
I do have one really brief item. I was looking at an email from the Friends of the Arbor Kingdom, they have a proposal about a pile of gravel. And essentially it would be moving the, you know, I don't want to burden the DPW with more work, but there's a small pile of gravel that's over on the side of the meadow, I would like to see if the board wanted to entertain allowing them to use that pile to fill in low spots in some of the established trails.
I think you want to speak to that, based on the walk with Prism.
Yeah, I talked about this one, we did a walk with Prism last week. There is a layup, this is growing in this pile of stone, and based on what Prism had said about disturbing the earth promotes the growth of these invasives, a little apprehensive to go in and start digging away at this. Is there a need to have that stone removed right away, or can we come up with a plan or do a treatment on the elanthus to limit the amount of growth that could spur from...
So, so the understanding that at least Prism gave us at that point was that every time you disturb the land...
It promotes the growth.
It encourages elanthus, if we pick up the elanthus in the gravel without it being treated?
Yeah, we could also, you know, distribute the elanthus...
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yes.
Because I talked to people about it, and what they said was that in disturbed, the best way to treat a disturbed area is to plant native plants. And the reason I think it's a good idea to move the gravel pile is because then we could go ahead and hopefully plant pollinators in the meadow, which has been the plan since the beginning of the project. Gravel by its nature is, it's used in construction as an architect, because it drains water. Roots grow where, where there is water. Actually dug through the pile today to see if there are any roots in it, or are not. So, you know,
Oh, then move the pile.
What's that?
Move the pile. No roots, nothing, go ahead, move it, right? I think that'd be fun.
I'm saying, everybody's going to be walking on the gravel, and that's, if anything's in there, we'll get,
Yeah, Bob already looked, there's no roots, there's nothing. I would just say, move it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And my thought was, in the western part of the meadow, there's actually a couple of little spots on the trail that during the spring it has standing water, that would be a great place to spread it, that could be used. And Zach did that in other locations on the trails, it works really well. So that would be an easy solution.
Yeah, so there we go. I mean, that's great, because Bob took the time out to really look and make sure there's no roots, so let's just move it.
Sure. We won't be able to obviously establish any new growth of pollinators until the coming season.
I don't think it's an urgent priority, you know. If you came a root in the soil below the pile, just by exposing it this time of year, Atlantis is not going to not weed. So if you pull a root out of the ground, it's dead, it's not going to resprout. If it was not weed and you dropped it somewhere, it could resprout next week.
Oh, not weed.
Right, right.
Great, okay.
So anyway, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on gravel discussion, but I would, and I'll just go ahead and make a motion that the Friends of the Arbor item is able to move the pile of gravel and then put it in low spots on trails.
Okay, good. Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lefier.
Aye.
Trustee Lekid.
Aye.
Mayor Kummer.
Aye. Okay, gravel's going.
Hi, gravel.
Good guys, all right, thank you. Any other member items?
If they print by in the morning and I have no promise, sure.
Oh, that's all right, I have to come in at 2:30 anyway, could I do it then?
Oh, yeah, I'll let them write that.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the meeting. I'll second.
We've done that one. Roll call please.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lefier.
Aye.
Trustee Lekid.
Aye.
Mayor Kummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your input, Zach.